So I will call the meeting to order and we will once again stand to say the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're called noting full board is in attendance. This meeting was properly posted. The first thing on the agenda is some comments from the board presence and I appreciate the opportunity to do this. As this is the first full board meeting since the election of officers, I wanted to offer some remarks. I thank the board for indulging me. I want to start by sharing a recent experience. As you know, Arrowhead's graduation was on Saturday. Despite moving the start time, rain fell pretty much from the start to the finish of the commencement. Amy, Daryl, Chris and I had the privilege of being on stage to pass out diplomas. They can all attest, the rain did nothing to dampen the energy of the day. To be joined by each graduate on stage to look them in their eyes as they smiled and radiated excitement. To actually feel like we were on stage passing the baton to those who oversee the future direction of our country. Now that's an opportunity like no other and I thank Arrowhead for the experience. There are many fine speeches as we talked about earlier that day. From students, staff and administration. Principal Kirk included in his presentation some amazing information about our graduating class. Which he was kind enough to forward to me that I might share with all of you. Because it is truly such an extensive list, I will condense things a bit due to time constraints. These are just some of the many accomplishments of our Arrowhead class of 2022. We had 12 national merit semifinalists, one of the highest numbers in the state. Multiple students were recognized by Wisconsin Jerry Awards for their amazing performances on stage. Many of our seniors performed with the Wind Ensemble at Carnegie Hall. Eight seniors will receive Wisconsin's certificate of global competence. We had seniors who earned literally dozens of writing awards and were published in books and magazines across the country. One senior qualified to compete at the National Forensics Tournament in Washington DC. One senior just bought his own rental home in Milwaukee and is currently working with a lawyer to draw leases and become a landlord as he enters college. Six seniors were jury into the scholastic art competitions for the state of Wisconsin. One senior will represent the United States at the U20 Pan American Championships in Mexico on July 10th. One senior, the son of one of our Arrowhead teachers, competed in Ohio last Saturday at the United States U20 Wrestling Trials and won. This victory puts him in the World Championships in Bulgaria this summer, best wishes for success. An Arrowhead senior was one of four students across the nation who participated in the Speak Up 2021 Congressional Briefing on Equity and Education. Two Arrowhead seniors were selected as NHHS and a double SP semifinalist and earned scholarships. Dozens of students will continue as student athletes at the college level next year. One senior was awarded the Platinum Level Graduating Senior Award by US Figure Skating. Our number one doubles team, one state, boys track and field, one of the WIAA state champs. One senior competed at the National High School Track Championships. Over 50 seniors earned industry-recognized credentials in health science and manufacturing, including Sawblade, AutoDell certifications, nursing assistant and EMT licenses and several more. Three seniors were on the girls volleyball team that won a state championship for the first time in school history. The senior class is ranked by US News as the top 500 school in the entire nation. These seniors served more than 2,500 community service hours just this year. We know at least one of our seniors scored a perfect 36 on the ACT. One senior graduated early, obtained his real estate license and has already sold his own home. This class earned a passing score of three or better on 603 AP exams. Seven softball seniors had an amazing year on a diamond finishing with incredible record of 21 and 2. And 12 students qualified for the 2022 International Decade Career Development Conference in Atlanta, Georgia. For those of you that were at the graduation, I'm sorry to repeat, but this is pretty incredible information. I can't imagine that there are many high schools that can boast of similar such accomplishments from their graduating class. This is what success looks like. But as they say, success is never accidental. This success comes from students who are themselves engaged in high achieving academics, sports, clubs and the arts. This success comes from a school chock full of teachers, administration and staff that care for, are committed to and work hard for our students. Importantly, this success comes from parents in a community that love their children and value academic success and model each accordingly in their homes. These are the same parents and community members who support school events, co-curriculars in sports and who come month after month to school board meetings. These are the same parents and community members that ask to be heard, call for greater responsiveness and greater transparency. These are in fact the same parents and community members who literally changed the face of our board. As the board president, I can confidently speak on behalf of this board that we share in this joint commitment to student success. Our board is now comprised of members who can share history and depth of board experience based on their tenure. And brand new members who exude enthusiasm, bring new perspectives and offer fresh eyes and thoughts on everything. Board members are inquisitive, questioning, data savvy and involved. The board is currently engaged in the creation of good policy, better understanding of school finance in an effort to best allocate resources and strive for a feasible school budget. Board members are good communicators who are looking to engage with the community in order to best represent them, anticipating we will be held accountable by them. We will then in turn engage and collaborate with our school stakeholders. In time, we look to participate in enhanced goal setting for the purpose of driving student success even further. On behalf of the board, we look forward to playing a part in the future success of all students and graduates of Arrowhead High School. I thank you for allowing me to discuss. So next up is a recommendation to approve the minutes of the April 27th school board meeting. I'll make motion to approve the minutes. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes of the April 27th, 2022 special board meeting, eyes please. Opposed? Thank you. Eyes have it. Motion to approve the April 27th special board meeting minutes, curious. Second up would be the May 11th, 2022 regular Board of Education meeting.
I would move that we adopt the minutes as presented. We're particularly, congratulations to our new options.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion to approve the May 11th, 2022 regular Board of Education meeting. Minutes, curious. Thank you. Next order of business is a resolution to approve the fill list. I make a motion to approve the fill list.
Actually, I have a question about it. Just curious about the big ticket items on the visas, just wondering if you can share anything with regards to 111,000, maybe 62,000? What those items are? I can research to prove. You want to get back to you or do you want? I mean, I'm sure that's, I'm just kind of curious, just because they were big ticket items, so you can get, you can get back to me. I think 62,000 for education furniture. I can't sell off of that account code.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Oh, we have every? Yeah. You have a second? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The motion to approve the fill list, curious. Thank you. Next up is the superintendent's report.
And I'm happy to say that Mr. Greg Woodshark is here. He has spent the last year as the NASSP, which is the National Association for Secondary School Principals. Greg was elected into their president role. And some of the board members here will remember that that was a lengthy process. He was nominated and then elected by his peers across the nation. During the school year, while he still was officially a principal of ours and we called him an adjunct principal, that association paid for 100% of his salary so that they could use his time to do his work and he's here to give us presentation on just what that entails and what he's learned that we might be able to learn from.
I'm going to stand because I work better when I'm standing. First of all, I want to say thank you to the board for giving me the opportunity to do this. It was a tremendous experience for me. And as president, you get to choose what you want to do. And if you want to be full-time president or part-time president, Laura and I had talked when I was running for that she was really not interested in having me be a part-time president because I'd be out of the building about 50 days and without having somebody here. So this allows for animosity to come in and then I'm retiring, so it felt really well. And oftentimes the presidents, what they do is they go all around the country and they speak at conferences, a state conference. All probably 90% of states have their state conferences. Problem was this year is that because of COVID, you have to plan these a year in advance, start planning them a year in advance. So because they didn't, they didn't want to take a chance on losing money on it, many states, most states canceled. I've probably done six of those. I've got one next week in Texas. So I had to pick up, I had to find something to do and I wanted to get out there. I wanted to be around and connect with people. So what I decided to do was to go to all 50 states and do school visits in all 50 states. And I take their cool ideas that I see and then I share them out in a blog. And basically we pick one per state and then, and then there's others that I have for each state, but there's one per state that goes in the blog. And that goes out to all of our members and our members then are, see these ideas that they like them, they can contact these principals. I put their contact information in and I have verification on it and I don't talk to all these other principals. I got verification, I was up in Green Bay at Wisconsin State Conference and principal whom I've never met before came up and said, hey Greg, I love your blog, it's awesome. As a matter of fact, I reached out to, I really liked the idea from John Adams High School in South Bend, Indiana about their graduation coach. So I reached out, he sent me all the materials and now we're using the, we're using the graduation coach with our kids. So that's what I want, I want to be able to share those ideas because there's a ton of really cool ideas. And quite frankly, as I started to do this, I was worried that maybe I would run out of ideas. But every school that I've gone to has had something unique, cool, different, beneficial for kids. Sometimes it's really minor, it's not a, it doesn't take a lot of involvement, some are pretty involved. I'm going to highlight some of those today for you, that's some of the, probably the most transformational ones that I've seen. Before I kind of go into that, how did I come up with this idea about sharing? Well, I'm going to show you my first slide here. There you go. Okay. As you can see, and that's unfortunately the light is there, this is me with my portable desk. And if you could, it was darker, you'd see that I'm wearing shorts, which I don't ever wear to school. I've never worn shorts before. And the reason why I wear shorts today was six below. And I was trying to get a message to the kids who were wearing shorts all winter long, that winter, you know, trying to let them know how silly they looked and it just made me look silly apparently. But the idea came from, and this is kind of where I got the idea from. I, two principals or two presidents ago, the president went out and she was doing something similar, but only in urban schools. And she had a presentation and the principal there had a portable desk. And she was talking to me and she talked about how he was able to get around and how he used it. So I contacted a company, they donated forum to us. We didn't have to pay for that desk, it was a thousand dollar desk. And they just donated it to us. All I had to do is kind of report back on how I used it. And so what I would do is I would stand, so normally I come in the morning and I'm typing out my, doing my emails. It takes me an hour to do my emails. And I'm away from kids, I'm away from staff. Well, there, I am on the hall greeting kids that are coming in and doing my emails when I've got time. It allows me to kind of kill two birds with one stone. I can go on the lunchroom. That's how I got the idea, because I heard, because I saw that, then I thought, man, there's really cool ideas out there. What if I just go out there and share the ideas? So that's kind of where the impetus came for me to go out and take these ideas and share them. So now, and what I've done, this is, this is part of the presentation that I do. I'm just taking the four most transformational, there are many others. In my presentation, I've probably talked about 15 different things that I've seen, but these are the ones that to me are probably the most impactful. So this was the last school that I did in my, this was in my 50th state that I did it. So it's a middle school in Colorado Springs, North Junior High or Junior High School rather. And it was the lowest, the lowest functioning middle school in the whole district. And they have like eight middle schools in the district and it was, it was the last. And as a matter of fact, you know how some states they have these, where you actually can, school can be taken over if it's not, if it's not performing well. They had had that two years in a row and if it had gone to a third year in a row, then they would have, they would have lost control of that school. That's how poorly they were performing. And in two years, they went from being the poorest performing school to being the highest performing school in their district. And probably in the top 10% in their state. Okay, so how did they do that? Well, see that little thing called student profiles there? We do that with many of our specialized students where we kind of get a sense of kind of what their skills are, how they learn best. And we try to place them in positions so they can be successful. They do that with all 540 other students. So every student, every student has an academic and emotional, social emotional profile. And what they do is like they'll, and it goes down to, do these kids do better in the morning or in the afternoon with their academic classes? Do they work better with, are they kids who get their homework done on time or are the kids who need to be nagged about their homework? They have, I mean, they have everything about them. Are both their parents alive? Do they live with both their parents? They have all that information and from that, they then hand schedule all 540 kids into a class that will, with a teacher that will meet their needs best, that will best meet their needs. So instead of, you know, in our school, we've got so many, you got, you know, four teachers that teach freshman English. Some of them really, their personalities work really well with some kids and some they don't. We don't, we just, whoever the computer gives them. I don't know if it'd be possible here, to do what they're doing there, their counselors and their associate principal spend one month, month of May, they don't do anything else. This is all they do. Everybody else covers for them and then they hand schedule to make sure that these kids are in the right place so they can be successful. Now that is what was, that's what they did to make this become this really powerful school. He believes that they will be within two years that they will be the highest performing middle school, junior high in the whole state of Colorado because of where they're going. Now you have really dedicated folks, you have to have the right people. His associate principal is a master puzzle maker, makes you gloves, any kind of puzzles. And it's a puzzle to try to make sure that this kid gets there, that kid gets there and all of those things. So a lot of time and energy is put into this. However, we see the reward on the back end for the students are then put in, get positions where they can be the most successful. That, we get one of the more transformational ideas that I've seen. This is one that I saw early on. I made a really vital air when I first started this. I went in September, and where did I go in September? End of September, I go south. Why? I don't know. So I'm driving through, and when I go to my schools, this is what I wear because I wear their school colors. Every school I go into, I wear their school colors and when I'm doing two schools in a day, that means I'm changing in the middle of the day. So I'm running into a bathroom and changing and coming out because I want to wear their school colors. So tactically, I was in the south, I'm wearing this, it's 95 degrees, I'm just dying. So I made a really good idea, the next one I was in, it was middle of October, I went to the northeast, got a skill color change, so thanks for that. So this is in York, Maine. And they have what's called the Pi and the Pride and these are, this is an advisory program that they have. And what I did find is that probably 90% of the middle schools and high schools have some type of advisory program that they have available for their students. Some of it's every day, some of it's once a week, some of it's twice a week, whatever. In that advisory time, they do a number of different things. Sometimes they have their club meetings that time. Oftentimes it's tutoring or getting students caught up academically. That's probably the major reason why it's used. So they did it, they had it and they just had the Pi, which is the academic piece of it. When they first started, four years ago, and maybe with half hour a day, every day. So five days a week, they have a half hour. Now, one of the things that makes it really work well is they're in really small groups. So the groups are 10 to 12 students. And they are in the same, they're with the same 10 to 12 students with the same teacher all four years. So there was never a student that graduates from that school that does not have a connection with an adult in that field. And it's a, it's a good sized school, probably not as big as ours, but about 12, 1300 students in the, in the school. And they make, and everybody does it. So the counselors have a group, the librarian has a group, the associate principals have a group and they meet every day for a half an hour. Principal, they did it for two years and saw that they were not getting the faint for their butter they thought they were going to get. Did not see the performance of the academic performance jump where they thought. So he sat down with the counselors and the psychologists and said, you know, if our kids are not emotionally ready to learn, we can pump all the tutoring into them we can, but they're not going to learn. They're just, they're not, they're not ready for it. So they decided to incorporate one day a week where there would be some type of social emotional connection, activity, discussion. It might be something, something simple as a discussion on who's going to homecoming, you know? Why don't we have, why are so few kids coming to our athletic events anymore? We used to have so many and now we're not. Those are some of the conversations, just discussions, half-hour discussions. And, and the counselors and the psychologists put this together. And what they found was they saw a dramatic increase in academic performance when they incorporated that piece into it. So much so that the next year they went to two days a week. And then next year, again, they saw a huge jump again, even more so when they went to two days a week. So next year they're doing it every other day. They're on an A day, B day schedule. So instead of doing it on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they're going to do it on A days. So every A day, they're going to have this, they're going to have discussion about all these life skills, life ideas and social emotional kind of activities. And then the other three days, it's academic. By doing this, and I think there's two parts to this that makes it really successful. One is you're taking care of that social emotional and getting those kids ready to learn. But then you have the fact that they're with the same teacher for all four years, the same 10 kids in their group. So they get to know each other and they feel comfortable with each other. When I was in high school, I had a homeroom, I had the same homeroom for, same homeroom teacher and the same homeroom students. That was bigger, probably about 20 kids. But that particular teacher, I'm still connected with him. I still keep in touch with him. He's got to be close to 80 years old now. We still keep in touch. We email back and forth periodically because I made a connection with him and he made a connection with everybody. That, that ability to make that connection, that's one of the things I'm finding overall is when you see those connections being made, that's when you see the successes of those schools. So this is, this is really kind of a cool one. This is actually in Sergeant Bluff, Iowa, which is Luton High School, it's on the far west part of Iowa. And they use a thing called authentic intellectual work. I'd never heard of it. I've gone and talked to our state executive director, he's never heard of it. Our associate executive director for our state association had never heard of it. But the interesting thing is it was developed at the University of Wisconsin. So, you know, we're in Madison, there are those stations in Madison and they've never heard of it. And this might be one of the coolest things that I've ever seen. So what they do, and how many of your kids have you had, have gone to Arrowhead? Where they do peer editing when they're doing, when they're writing papers? Have you ever, have you heard about that or your kids have done that and been involved in that? So yeah, Daryl, you've seen it. So basically what happens is that you write, you've got four peers, then they see what you've written and then they give you feedback on what you wrote. So that, and that's helping them learn to write better as well and it's helping you to improve your writing. That's what this is for teaching. So what you do is you put, what they have is they have cross-curricular groups, five different teachers. And it's, once a month you meet, the teacher comes in and they bring in their lesson, maybe it's an assessment, maybe it's a lab. And the, and the job for the teachers is to critique it, to give it feedback and not necessarily positive. You're not telling them what's, what they're doing well. Now, it took them three years to go from starting this to where the teachers felt comfortable bringing in their lessons and asking, help me with this lesson, it's not working. The gentleman who was, the gentleman who was explaining this to me is a chemistry teacher. And he was the one who cut, was the one who went and got trained, came to Madison and got trained on this. And he said, he thought he was a good chemistry teacher, kids knew the chemistry when he talked to them in class. They got their reports done well, their homework was done well and they would take the tests and they would bomb the tests. Not everybody, but a good portion of the kids would bomb the test. And this went on for 15 years. This was not just a, this is 15 years of kids blowing tests. And he would talk to his other department mates and, you know, tests looked fine, they didn't know what to do. So the very first thing that he brought in was his test. Within two minutes, three minutes, he said, the English teacher in his group said, what levels is written for? These are really highly scientific words in the questions. So they did a readability on it and it was written for juniors in college. The test was written at a junior in college level. He just changed the wording, the questions are exactly the same except for he changed the wording to be more, to be more sophos in juniors in high school because that's who takes the class. Boom, kids started performing off the charts because they, because now they could read it, it fit their reading level. If you look at their scores, if you go and look at their scores, they would get an area of 58% free and reduced lunch rural school district. And their scores compare positively to suburban schools in Iowa. That's, that's how much of an impact that has had on doing it. Now again, it took three years to get the teachers to the point. But if you think about it, it's, you've got experienced teachers giving, giving newer teachers feedback. You're going cross-departmentally, so you, you know, you have to be able to explain, you have to explain it to a person who's not in your department. Lots of collaboration, a lot of connecting this with the, with the staff, that has had a huge impact. That to me, as far as the sitting down with what you're doing in the classroom, that was probably the most impactful thing that I saw. And now the, and now the one that is like my, it's my A plus rating. And I, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to sound stereotypical here, but it's in Mississippi. So you know, you would say that, you know, if you look at the results of Mississippi education, it's probably not considered one of the strongest states. I happen to know the superintendent and so that's why I went to that school and he has it rocking. And this particular program that they have, basically what they do, it's a, it's a careers type program. And most schools start up like somewhere in the middle school, they start some aspect of it. They start a little bit sooner, they start in the fourth grade with some aspects of it. So the kids are getting things all the way through. But what really is the part that is just like, is just genius. So he takes $50,000 a year out of the budget and it's set aside and that money is used for his students. So it takes a third of his juniors who go out into the community and they work for businesses in the community. So there's a carpet layer, there's someone who's got a printing order, there's somebody that's got a, you know, some doctor who's got, you know, an office there. And these kids, these 50 kids get placed in summer internships and the school pays for the internship. He started off with 20 business partners that he reached out to, train them, here's what I want you to talk about. Obviously, how to come to work on time, how to collaborate with others, how to, but then teach them whatever skills they need to be your employee down the road. So look at that as well. He started off with 20, he's never reached out to another business person in the community, they now, he now has 76 business partners. Because everybody wants to be a part of this. Because they're getting, basically they work for 100 hours and they get, and they get, they get 815 hours, so they get 850 bucks. That's, but it's 100 hours that that employer does not have to pay for, the school pays for it. The kid, there is no commitment, so the employer does not have to hire the student afterwards. The student does not have to stay there afterwards to be employed. The, and then what he does is, you know how I used to, Adam does this, we can review on Fridays. It goes to the board and goes whole staff. In their district, and it's a K-12 we can review, so we've got all things going on, all the great things going on in the school. It goes out to all 76 of the business partners once a week. So the kids, the people in the community know the great things that are going on in the school. Because that's one of the problems we have, is that there's really great things going on, but if you don't have kids in the school, you don't know about it, right? You're, how do you know? All those things you talked about, right? You just, you just listed, those are, and that's just a slipper, right? There's a lot of other things going on and they don't know about it. In that district, they know about it. And the community, the business leaders in that district go, I know that my business will benefit from a great school. But better my school is, the more commitment I put into this school, my business is going to benefit from that. They see it, how it's going to power fix it then, or helps them, not just 100, the extra 100 hours of free labor that I get. But it's more than that, it's, the better the school is, it means that I'm going to have better employees coming, working for me. Community is going to be more involved. the, the better the school is, it means that I'm gonna have better employees coming, working for me, the community's gonna be more involved. They believe, he believes that if he goes to referendum this year, he will win eighty-twenty, he'll have eighty percent of the people in the community, but that's how it makes it. Right now, right now, if you go to Arrowhead, if you don't have, if you're not part of this board, if you're not, if you don't have kids here anymore, your allegiance to this school oftentimes ends on Friday night after the football game, right? So you're, you, you know, people care about the football game, care about the basketball game, but after that, they kind of forget about it. In this community, that's not the case, everybody has bought in, you see, you see there's stickers on cars everywhere, um, that, you know, supporting their, their school. So those are the four coolest ideas that I've seen. There are, again, last, I mean, I'll just give you one really quick, simple one, school in Virginia, they, uh, they have lots of, they don't have a lot of carpet. And they have lots of chairs like this, and they were scraping up the floors, like custodians were having to wax the floors four times a year. And the custodian said, let's, you know, those walkers, tennis balls in the pockets, let's put the tennis balls on the bottom of the chairs. So every chair that's on, that's on, has, has tennis balls on the bottom, they had no problem with kids throwing them around, I, I get it. Uh, that's, it's actually, it's in Langley, Virginia, right next to CIA, uh, headquarters, so maybe that has something to do with it, I don't know. Anyway, um, now they only have to wax the floor once a year, so it saves them money, saves them time, and they, they get second tennis ball, it already cuts. I mean, those are some of the ideas that I, that, that I've heard as well, so it's not just something as, you know, extravagant as that. I would say, the, if I was, the, the, come, what I've come away from, see all fifty states, talking to principals in all fifty states, talking to students, teachers in all fifty states. There's a couple of things that I've, that came to, that just, that I kind of have come to understand. Uh, the inequity in the schools is so great, it's unbelievable, it's, I mean, that, my, my grade means so significant. Uh, I was in a school, rural school in southern Michigan. Uh, it's a hundred and fifteen-year-old school, and they've never had a major reconstruction or major, uh, uh, work done on the building. The only work that's been done, the only kind of, any kind of remodeling is in the summer, so they take two months in the summer, whatever they can get done in two months in the summer. And they're still teaching in that building, and the community loves it because it's, you know, there's this historical building. And then I went, the, the, the next day, I was in, um, it's Huntley, uh, Chicago, Huntley, Illinois, and it's a six-year-old school, it's beautiful. They have their own television station, they have their own, in the school, where kids can actually do their broadcast. They have their own bank in the school, the kids at that school are gonna have such a much better opportunity than the kids in school in Michigan. And they're doing everything they can, but it's hodgepodge, so, so that's, so, and I, and the more I go around, I was in a school in California, that, it was just like, it was sad to walk in there and to see this school, it's right on the, right on the desert, uh, in Barstow, California. And it, it, you know, it's a rundown place, they're trying to do the best they can, but they just don't have the resources to do, um, the things that some other schools that I have been in. Um, the other thing that I, that I would say that I've seen is the schools that are really thriving. They, they see their staff as a, as a commodity that's extremely important, and that they value, and they take care of the staff. Um, I was in, I was in Henderson, uh, Nevada. They have five hundred teachers, five hundred unbilled positions this year. And, and that school's, you know, walked into, they had a, a freshman AP, uh, human geography class, forty-two kids in one class. And it really limits what the teacher can do and how the teacher can communicate with those kids and interact with those kids. They don't have a choice in matter because they can't find teachers, they're, the, the teacher shortage is real. Um, I, I, I go out there and I see it, it's, uh, California has twelve thousand uncredentialed teachers teaching, or under-credentialed teachers teaching. So maybe someone teaching physics who does not have a physics certification, but maybe has a biology certification, and they're teaching physics because they can't find anybody to teach those, to teach the class. I mean, right here in Swallow, we have one of the math teachers in Swallow, an uncredentialed math teacher, um, you know, but they can't, because they can't find anybody. That is real, that's happening, and so the schools that, that are doing, bending over backwards to take care of their staff or keeping their staff, retaining their staff, that's where we're seeing, I've seen really cool things, really great things going. The schools that are, are maybe not as successful at that, those are the schools that are, are probably struggling. So with that, any questions that you have for me?
Great. Well, we're like, I was surprised I didn't see Hawaii on the list, you know, anything exciting, yeah, I think. But, um, hard, hard to drive there.
I, no, I got the Hawaii.
But what would you say were like probably the top three things that you think would be, would be easy to implement at Arrowhead here too?
So, so I would say that, um, there was another one that, that, that I saw that I, that I thought was, could really be impactful. Um, and even here, now I'd point around, I think it would be more impactful in a school that is less, in a community that probably is less fortunate than we are. But in a school in West Virginia, the principal has decided that she wants to make connections with all of her freshmen. So they do how, they do home business with all five, four hundred and eighty freshmen. They have, uh, in the summer, the summer's starting right now, they're starting them right now, they have, they have a, a team of twelve, they go in pairs, they go and they meet with the kid, they meet with the parent at that, at that kid's house. And they just talk about what it is, you know, what you're, what you can expect when you come here, what you have to do, and then whatever questions they have, it's about a half hour with each group. That's, that kind of thing is something that, that we might be able to pull that off, and if not with all, all, maybe it's with the ones that we know that are gonna struggle. Maybe we, we take the, we peel off the bottom, you know, we peel off the, the bottom one hundred and say, those are the hundred that we're gonna focus on, because we know, we can go to, we can go to Z and greater counselors and say, who's gonna struggle here, and they can tell you who's gonna struggle here. So maybe, you know, maybe you could do it with that one. I think that's a, I think that's doable. I do think the one, the one from, the one from Iowa, uh, takes some time, it would take some work, but the, the, where you're doing that, where you're doing the authentic intellectual work, where you're giving feedback to other teachers, I think that's really powerful. Uh, there is some cost upfront, but once you get it going, there's really no cost to it at all, it's, there, there's training that you have to do, and they give you some rubrics to teach you how to give feedback to other teachers, teach the teachers how to get feedback, but once you get through that, then it really no, there's no more cost to it, you've gotta go and you just keep it running. So, um, I think those would be two that I think we could, we could, you know, definitely do. And there's some small ones, there're little, simple ones, like, um, kind of, this school might not be happy about this, but, um, one of the schools, it actually generates funds for them, and, and this was in Georgia. They allow seniors to, to literally pick their parking spot. And then they get to paint their parking spot, whatever they want, within, it has to be approved by administration, right? They can't paint the bottom, reject the angles or something to that, but, you know, it has to be something appropriate, school-appropriate, and then that's their parking spot, nobody else gets to, gets to be on that spot. And, and so I think something like that, and they charge forty bucks extra for that. People want your own personalized spot, it's worth it, so it generates for their schools, it's not, it's not a huge school, about about five hundred kids in the school, but it generates for them about four thousand dollars extra a year, but the kids are, like, they own, they're ownership, they, they feel more connected. And this is a school, I, I will just share that idea, because it's probably one of my favorite ideas. Um, this is cool, when, when the principal got to the graduation, it was a really poor school, very poor school. I drove in there, I'm like, oh my god, there's broken windows, there's, there's rusty cars on the, you know, northern rural Georgia. Fifth, when she got there, the graduation rate was fifty-eight percent, so only fifty-eight percent of the kids were graduating. Go to college, go to tech school, military, they graduated, nobody else graduated. What do you do? So she started connecting with kids, community, finding out what's going on, and she was about with the kids just to feel connected, so that was one of the ideas they have. But the other one was probably the one that kind of really pushed them over the head, and it's so silly, when you, you hear this, you're gonna go, but it, we would never use it here, we don't need to, we, we have a good graduation rate. She allows the seniors, two weeks before graduation, to sign her gown that she's gonna wear at graduation. She wears the same gown that the kids wear, so, they're wearing red, she's wearing green, green gown. They get to sign the gown, and she hangs that gown on the rafters in the cafeteria. And, and she says to me, in two years, we went from fifty-eight percent to ninety-four percent graduation rate. And I was a little skeptical, I'm like, come on, you know, she signed it, and, and as she says, as a teacher walks by, she says, mine's on the third one from, yeah. Her name was on, is on the third one, and the principal said that kids stick around for two hours after graduation, take a picture of her, and point to where they signed her gown. Okay, so, anyway, so, you know, those are, then again, and, and again, there was, there was not a school that I went to that didn't have something like, something like that, that everyone's doing something really cool. Nothing else, thank you so much.
Well, when you look at a report, and you can see everything that you've been able to.
So at the end of this, so what I'm doing at the end of this, so there's a blog, and I can actually send, I can send Laura the blog, and you can actually check it forward and onto you, so you can take a look at it. If you wanna see the ones that have written for each state.
Yeah.
And then at the end, I'll be putting a document together of all the ideas, because I, so for instance, so, um, I was in a school here in Wisconsin, I went to Ole Miss, I worked there for years, I was gonna go there and check it out. And, um, I, I, right now, I can't even remember what their, what the idea that I, that I wrote about. But one of the things that they do, that will end up in the, in the document, is, uh, they have a school to, they have a, a farm-to-school program. So all the beef that is, that is consumed in the lunch program, they raise their own beef, um, and have it for the, and have it for the, the lunch program there. And a third of their lettuce and all of the asparagus, they have, they have an asparagus area, and so they have a lot of asparagus, so the kids don't like it so much, but, you know. So anyway, all those other ideas that I, that I have not been able to blog about, but I still have them, they're still great ideas, that's gonna be available in a document, that will go onto all of our members, and I'll make sure that you guys have access to that as well. Craig.
Greg, um, just, when you look back on this ten years from now, what will you remember, what will be something that you're pleased that you were able to have done?
So for me, it's all about the connections, and so I, I'm, when I go and speak, I'll be speaking in, in, in Austin next week, and I talk about connections. Making connections, the importance of making connections. So for me, it's about, um, I don't have one of my coins here, but I get coins, I, I got challenge coins that I gave to all of my principals when I went to their school. And on the back it says, connect seven twenty, or connect five forty. If you're high school, you got seven twenty, if you're middle school, it's seven, it's at five forty. What that meant was, from the time they step in your door as a freshman to the time they graduate, you have seven hundred and twenty days, that's how many days are gonna be in your school. What are you doing to connect with them? What are you doing to connect with their parents? What are you doing to connect with business folks on their behalf, with legislators on their behalf? So what are you doing? So for me, it's about the connecting, how much, you know, what, what are we doing for connecting? So, um, you know, when I look back on this, and one of the things that I do in my, when I do my presentations, so when I'm doing my presentation in Austin, and I have no idea, the breakout session, so I could have ten and I could have forty, so I, you know, I just don't know. But when I do my sessions, one of the things that I do, uh, near the end, before I come, before I show these best three or four, I say, okay, now I want everyone to stand up. Stand up, go around, find somebody in this room that you've never met before. Okay, now I want you to, I want you to do four things, because when I go into schools, this is what I ask them to share with me, I mean, they show me those schools, I said, the things I want you to focus on are one thing that you've implemented that costs less than a thousand dollars, and the one thing you're most proud of. So I said, I want you to share with your new, with your new friend, what's one thing in your school that you're most proud of, what's one thing that you've implemented that costs less than a thousand dollars, so you share that. Third thing you do is you share, uh, you share your contact information, and the fourth thing you do is you set up a Zoom meeting for next week. So here you're setting up a Zoom meeting with somebody that you've never met before for next week, and the purpose of that meeting is to talk about what you're gonna take from this conference that you're gonna implement and use when you go, that when school starts next fall, you know, when we do it, because we just started next fall, because they're already done in, in Texas. So that's what I'll say, that what are you gonna take from this conference you learned that you're gonna use next fall, that you're gonna implement? Again, trying to build those connections. So that's, if, if, my takeaway is, if we, if we are more connected, then, and principals and school folks are more connected, we can, we don't all have to invent the wheel, right? We, we might have a problem here that they've solved already in, you know, in, in South Bend, Indiana, that, and we go through this, and oh, that would, that would take care of our problem right there, let's call that person up. So, and, and my whole picture on this is really about the teacher shortage. This is, this is, this is where I kind of got the impetus for this was, was how can we do a better job of telling our stories? So when I go out and I present, this is what I talk about, presenting your stories, how do you change the narrative? Because there's great things going on in schools, there's great things, you talked about them just here, right? Awesome things going on, you know what, every one of our feeder schools has those same great things going on in their schools, but you know what, we don't do a great job. School folks are not really great about bragging and, but, you know, kind of humble a lot, they don't wanna, they don't wanna, you know, help themselves too much, and they don't wanna, you know, pat their, pat themselves on the back, so we gotta find out how to do that. Because we need to change the, the narrative to make young people be more interested in this profession. It's, it's, it's really getting to a scary position, I mean, Nebraska, they were saying, in the last two years, the state of Nebraska has not graduated a physics education major. So not one in the whole state of Nebraska. So what are we gonna do with that when, when the, when the baby boomer physics teacher retires, and now we can't find anybody to fill that position? In Milwaukee, right now, one of the schools in Milwaukee could not find an algebra, ninth-grade algebra teacher, couldn't find one in school. They actually, so, these, both these kids, and MPS at Vincent, were taking a class online because they couldn't find anybody. Okay, I believe that that's not really high-quality education for, for kids who are, who are often maybe not as motivated. And so they are now, um, just being taught by a computer, basically on a computer. We, if we get to that point, I mean, we're gonna see a lot of kids really suffer, and from my perspective, our strength in this world is our educational system, right? That's what it has been, if you, if you take a look, we were the first country to, to have, you know, back in the, in nineteen eighteen, the business leaders of, of the, of our country got together and said, you know what, we need to, we need to fund high schools. I know it's gonna cost us money, but we need to be the best educated group of people in the world. That's where our strength is gonna come from, that's how we're gonna outshine everybody else, that's how we're gonna use, you know, that's how we, we're gonna make ourselves a powerhouse, and they, they recognized that, they saw that, and they invested in that. Well, we don't have, if we don't have young people going into the profession, or people changing their profession to go into it. It's very difficult when you see that, you know, you've got kids that are graduating from here, going to college, and in four years, and they're making more than what a twenty-five-year veteran teacher's making here. You know, they're right out of college, they're making more, uh, wait, this is probably ten years ago, when our student got a job as a nurse, and she was making seventy-two thousand dollars a year. She's working in a hospital, and so it's a little bit harder work, and the time is not, it's not as difficult time that you, you're paying a lot of time and you're having to work holidays and things of that nature. But ten years ago, she's making seventy-two thousand dollars right out of college, you know, that's probably the time former top-end teachers were at, where that's what they were making at that time. So how do you motivate young people to, to come into this profession? And we have to do it by telling the story, by talking about the great things that are going on in schools.
Following this theme of, of, of connections, it, it strikes me that, uh, not just in our school, but probably in most schools, there's a, a disconnection, I think, being made, uh, by the use of tech, the cell phones, uh, you know, the laptops, that are just pulling the kids into their own world. I'm wondering if you went into any of the schools and you found, um, strategies, if you will, that, uh, that they, they worked around the area of tech to actually reconnect kids in a better way?
I don't know that they did that intentionally, I don't know that I saw anything that, that was like, that was intentional. I will say, like, I, I was in a school, it's a STEM school, STEM Academy in Pennsylvania. And in that school, it's, it's, it's very project-based, so it's not a lot of teachers sitting up and kids getting information, and the projects are all, uh, group projects. So you're working against a group project or a goal, and those kids are having to work together at a table, they're on a project, they're working, and they have all these rooms that kids can sign out and go into, that's what they do, they go in there and they're working. Now, this is a, this is, this is, this is a, uh, uh, not, not AP, but, uh, IB school, International Backglorious School. So these kids are all having to take multiple IB classes, these are hot, it's very, very rigorous, extremely rigorous. So these are kids who, who are going off and, you know, going to Columbia, going to Harvard, going to Princeton afterwards, so, um, but these, those kids were, didn't have time to do the social stuff, because they were so, you know, uh, I don't think it was done intentionally to shut down the, the social media, but it was done, it was a necessity for them to be successful. So, I mean, that might be one way of, of getting at that. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank, just take a minute, not only to thank Greg for being here tonight, but for his twenty-nine years of serving as a.
I always know that when I was walking down the stage with my son and our, I got a little choked up. I am really worried about, about, uh, uh, the twentieth, because I'm handing over my keys to Laura on the twentieth, and that's maybe the, you know, I've had the keys displayed for twenty-nine years, and I'm turning it over, so that's gonna be the hard, hard.
I love tissues a lot.
Yeah, very good. I mean, thank you all.
And now we're gonna keep rolling with good news, our end-of-school-year report. Every year we have Donna Smith, our Director of Library, Technology, Library, Media. We have Sukhita Seda, our Director of Learning. We have Adam Holt, our Director of Student Services, and we have Adam Kurt, our Principal. At the beginning of the school year, I think it was October, um, board members heard, here's our goals, here's our areas of focus for the year, and now we wrap that up. And with this school year, with things to celebrate, and perhaps areas we still need to throw in the first. Right? Right? Good evening, I'm Donna Smith. I'm the Director of Library, Media and Technology. And I'll keep this up by presenting the Integrated Technologies accomplishments and goals today. And I hope as you go through this, you not only see all the work that we've done, but you can see how proud I am of our whole integrated technology team. So we always want to ground ourself in the focus plan. So the Integrated Technologies area will mainly be the Prepare Students for Success Beyond High School, so the upper left, and then Advanced Facility Infrastructure and Technology to support student learning areas in the lower right. The Integrated Technologies Department can be broken into three different areas. So the Information Technology Library Media, the Student Information Area and Data, and then the IT Department, all of which support each other to educate students and provide them with the support that they need throughout school. I'm going to touch on each of these areas' accomplishments from this year and what we are looking forward to next year. So in the library, we have all new staff. Although we lost some veteran library aides, we are very lucky to have found our new staff. This year, not only have they learned the followed software, library procedures, and technology support that they need to know, but they've also embraced the library space as a welcoming area for all our students, as you can see through some of the displays that they've worked on this year. As we've seen in past years, technology circulation and management keeps them busy. So we check out about 20 laptops and 75 Chromebooks each day. Even though we pulled these numbers in mid-May, our Chromebook circulation is much higher in past years, as you can see. Student attendance in the library is very high. The libraries provide spaces for quiet study as well as group discussion areas and tutoring spaces. Before and after school are also popular times for students to meet. Before school, both campuses, libraries are filled with students touching base with their friends before first hour. And after school, you can find tutoring and studying happening in the North Library and so forth. So this year, we've had about 109,000 students in, and that's just during the day. And again, that's from mid-May, so it doesn't include before and after school. Our technology integrators have offices in the library and also serve as technology support for both students and staff. This year, the technology integration continued to look differently. Technology support was more one-on-one through interactions. The majority of interactions were through email. So about 40% was through email and drop-ins, 37%. And then the tool most used or explored, again, was Canvas at 52%. Although there were fewer integrations this year, they were impactful. For English 9, making sure our students are aware of the resources that are available to them as Arrowhead students, and how to search those databases properly is extremely important and will help them throughout their high school career as well as beyond. Jen Charles was also able to provide district office staff with some just-in-time training on the Google Suite products. Training set up by technology integrators has continued through the classroom teachers. These classroom teachers have worked alongside the technology integrators for years, and now those teachers feel confident enough to lead this training on their own. Those are some of the integrations that they're doing. The last time I was here, Craig asked about analyzing our SpeakUp results by grade level. We were unable to do this with our own data this year, but I was able to separate the national results from last year. I spoke with a representative from SpeakUp, and she said she would anticipate our grade-level results would have the same variance by grade year, although Arrowhead's numbers were higher for each of these statements. So from left to right, I know how to be safe while I'm online. Our students measured 83%. I know how to detect bias or opinions in information that I read online. Our students indicated 73%. And I know how to evaluate the accuracy of the information I find online, 64% for our students. And as soon as I get the actual data, I'll bring that analysis to share. In our data area, Sukhita serves as our data specialist, and she manages our student information system at Skyward. This year, one of her goals was to implement the new student online enrollment system that she successfully implemented along with the registrars and Sukhita Seda last fall. Because we are a union district, our students are new to us. And in order to collect accurate information for our students, we need to have parents involve children. In working with her team, she put together training for others, worked with Sukhita Seda to pull together a timeline and clear communication. The team processed the first time working through NSOE and have already made adjustments to the process to make it even smoother for next year. Sukhita considers data safety a big part of her job. She follows the principle of least privilege, which means that she provides staff access to the least amount of data that is needed to perform their jobs. She makes adjustments as staff changes positions or job requirements. So this is one of the many security measures that we make sure are in place. As a part of her duties, Sue does state reporting, which occurs throughout the year. And you can see that listed below the bullet pointed data pieces. Here are three of Sue's goals for next year. Skyward is slowly migrating to a cumulative database, which is upgraded and upgraded SQL database. So she's prepping for that. She will be implementing Skyward's health room office visits for our health room, monitoring the updates to various systems she manages, such as road track, which is our paying fees and buying tickets, school messenger Skylers, which is our messaging system. Our network is managed by Jeff Waters. In addition to doing traditional IT work, he also has some responsibilities configuring and maintaining other systems, including the cameras, building management system, the phone system, the S2 Door access system, the Fox system, and the AI phone system, which includes our radios. We've been busy this year. As a team, we've completed our cybersecurity plan, had a network evaluation, which resulted in some needed adjustments. And we upgraded our servers, which provide storage and virtual servers. Jeff implemented a central management, which allows us to detect machines that may be infected. And he has been researching single sign-on and two-step authentication, which we will be implementing this summer. Network goals and summer work will include our interior and exterior fiber project, implementing single sign-on and two-step authentication for increased security, integrating our cybersecurity plan into the school safety plan. And we will also be upgrading our equipment as shipping allows, preparing for the new standardized testing systems, and surveying our wireless to increase performance. Together as a team, we keep moving forward to prepare our students for their futures, keep our data systems up to date and safe, and provide our students and staff with a technology environment that is robust and updated to support teaching and learning. And with that, I will pass it on to our Director of Teaching and Learning, Sukhita Seda. Oh, questions?
I went fast, sorry. I have lots of time. Everybody, I'll try to keep my comments brief. I'm just going to hit a few highlights from the Teaching and Learning Team this year. We're going to be looking at some of the work that we did with academic exploration, our focus on student engagement this year, and some other highlights. Ace, Academic Career Exploration. This is continued work. You might recall, the state of Wisconsin has been heavily focused on making sure that academic career exploration programs are well embedded in schools K-12. And during the COVID year, we suspended some of our homeroom activities just to mitigate exposure in different rooms and things like that. So we moved our academic career exploration, homerooms are the lessons that we would normally do to online. And again, you know, students, when there is a time and a place to focus on something, they tend to do better with it. So this year, our goal was to renew and re-energize our work with academic exploration. Now, this work is very layered, right? Students do academic and career exploration as part of coursework, a lot of counseling meetings, freshman conference, junior conference, meetings with parents. But these are six times a year where we kind of stop the treadmill, if you will, to have students focus in on the things they're interested in. We focus on four areas, no explore, plan, and go. We design our lessons developmentally where students should be at in their post-secondary planning. And so we renewed our effort there to revise some of the lessons. We always take feedback from our students and from our staff about what will be engaging or interesting to students. And we always revise every year for that purpose. We moved into an extended third hour. So students are learning about academic career exploration, not from a random homeroom teacher that they only see a couple of times a year, but by a teacher they already have in class. So that was a change. We also brought in, we use Zello as a platform for academic career exploration. What students do in Zello is they plan, they explore, they look at colleges they're interested in, careers they're interested in, and they can save all these explorations. They look at, they do matchmaker activities where they can identify what might be a career that matches out with my areas of interest and my strengths and so forth. They can save all of that in a profile or in some sort of portfolio. So this year, we said, you know, parents are the number-one influence on our students' academic and career plans. We want to make sure that parents are invited to participate in the Zello platform. So we worked to integrate that process this year. We also developed a draft, which I presented to the curriculum committee back in the fall. We developed a draft of a pathway guide, an academic and career pathway guide that cross-references our students' course guide. This is in draft format, and we're looking to implement something like this as a tool for students in 2023. What this guide has in its draft format are programs of study here at Arrowhead that lend themselves to dual enrollment, industry credentials, job shadows, career-based learning opportunities, and post-secondary majors, or perhaps directly into the workforce or military and so forth. And the steps by which they can take courses that they can take and activities that they can be involved in along those career interests or along the 16 career clusters. This summer, we'll be taking a look at that draft at the Teaching and Learning Team and be thinking about ways that we can be helping all staff be aware of that tool and how we can be building that tool forward for the use of our students. So that's in its draft format. But that was one of the pieces of work that the Academic Career Exploration Team was involved in this year. We also were approved for two of the eight state-approved regional career pathways. Arrowhead has been approved for the Advanced Manufacturing Career Pathways. So that means the state has endorsed our pathway for students in terms of the programs of study we have in place, the extracurricular opportunities along the lines of advanced manufacturing and patient care that lends students to direct post-secondary placement, perhaps at university level or in job opportunities. There are eight state-endorced career pathways. Our next area of focus for that, in light of what Greg just said today, this is exciting, will be looking at education and out of our family and consumer education department. Human services and education is a career interest for our students, and so that's next. And finance and business, the state, as they looked at all of our pathway work, they said, "You're almost ready, you're on the test." They gave us some feedback to have some of those also regionally-approved career pathways. Yes, sir?
Can I ask a question there?
Yes.
Related to like our surrounding, what I would call competitive schools, competitor schools? Where do we rank in terms of number of those pathways?
So good question. So we, I don't know in terms of ranking, but I'll tell you this. We've joined as part of CISA's consortium, Carl Perkins Consortium, which is the federal grant that we get for career technical education. We're part of a consortium that builds that grant and decides how we want to use the funds to further career technical education. I would say we're somewhere in the beginning stages to middle in our local areas. Everybody kind of has areas of expertise. We've kind of got on our claim to fame, if you will, advanced manufacturing is sort of our claim to fame. Econom walks claim to fame, they have a really strong construction program. And so we've talked about regionally being able to share resources. We've built a computer science program in recent years. Kettle Moraine felt really positively about their coding and computer science. And so I would say we're right kind of in the middle of where we should be, but looking to advance quickly. Those regional pathways are just one opportunity to do that. Daryl participated in one of our business partner meetings recently, specifically for advanced manufacturing. We have, indicating similar to what Greg talked about with business partnerships, we have a plethora of businesses that want to be connected, want to provide opportunities, mentorship opportunities for our students. They partner with us, they help us get buy equipment, they help us do training for equipment, they give students opportunities through youth apprenticeship. So that is much like that meeting that Daryl participated in is part of the academic career exploration goals. I'll talk about that in a second. But I would say we're kind of in the middle, we're right in front with everybody else.
I did have a question. So did we get approved for two of them this year, or is it two cumulative that we have?
We, two this year. We applied and we were approved for two this year.
Have we?
We only submitted two.
Oh, in previous years, have we been approved for any of them?
We've never submitted anything until this year. We didn't feel like we were ready. But as the Perkins Consortium, Caleb Trel from CISA One took a look at some of our pathway work, and they said, "You guys are ready for this. You should already, you should ought to be approved for this in these areas." Gave us some feedback on some other pathways, and we're looking forward to approval for that for coming years.
I have one more question.
Sure.
With the Zello, I'm really intrigued by that. Is that like stored, is it like an exclusive Zello portal? Or is it like those files stored like on Canvas that?
No, it's its own portal.
It's its own portal, okay.
Yep, you can get there through the Arrowhead website.
Student resources. So if your kid fills their student resources on their launch pad, there'll be one at the bottom right.
Yeah.
What does it mean that we are approved for these pathways? I mean, what impact?
It means that our programs, the state of Wisconsin has a series of rubric criteria by which they look at regional career pathways, being a robust pathway, a sustainable pathway as part of your programming. And so they, when you're approved, they're basically saying, you know, we're as an endorsed pathway, we have access to some resources, we have access to, at least on a regional basis, we're able to say, like, we have the partnerships that we need for post-secondary planning. So WCTC, as part of our advanced manufacturing pathway, they recognize Arrowhead as that regional pathway. We recognize that WCTC is a direct link for us. It's a partnership, it's a communication tool, if you will, about what we have in place. So it's a feather in your cap to some degree that you've got the right steps for the pathway. But I think it's can also be used as a communication tool for students. It's a roadmap, if you will, and it's a regional roadmap. A lot of effort gets put into that. And I think we have to think regionally on some of these topics because obviously locally, we have certain opportunities for students, but students are going to look statewide, they're going to look regionally. Waukesha County Business Alliance has statistics on how many students come back to Waukesha County. They are enormously high statistics, but there is certainly students that come back to Waukesha County. They might not come back directly to Heartland, but opportunities for careers that reach beyond our municipalities. I think it's important for this to recognize this. In terms of some other feedback, we give surveys to students, freshmen through junior year, on their progress toward the outcomes of a graduate that we've identified as part of the academic career exploration process. And we ask seniors their feedback on the programs that they've had here that lend to their full secondary plans. I'm not going to go through everything in that survey. It's a very lengthy survey. Students self-assess and self-report to us. So this is all based on what they told us in terms of, it hasn't necessarily been vetted data. But essentially, what we know about our students, and this rings very, very true with the class of '22 as it does with other classes, about a third of their third identify themselves as being CTE-focused, that's career technical education-focused honors, or simply general studies. We ask students overall how confident they feel about their plans for the future, scale one to five, five being the highest. Do you see kind of a sense for where their confidence is at going into, after high school? We've asked them about, are they aware of the different types of careers they may be interested in? And this, as we've looked at other years, and I haven't done all the comparative studies. The last couple of years, the survey wasn't taken as widely as we'd like it to be. But this is something we keep track of, and we've seen a skew towards more confidence, which is really kind of exciting, that they understand the careers they might be interested in more so than they would have maybe 10 years ago, you know? "I understand my strengths and weaknesses as it pertains to my learning and future employment." This is what students told us. "When I work, I know how to collaborate and contribute to the group effort for work. We know how important collaboration is in the workforce." That's what students told us, how they feel. When I work, I know how to collaborate and contribute to the group effort for work. We know how important collaboration is in the workforce. That's what students told us how they feel. I know the steps of setting a goal and I've seen a variety of examples on how to do so. Goal setting is a big part of academic exploration. You can see how confident students feel. So that's just a sample. We asked about their communication skill, skills and how they feel about, about some other things as well. What are your plans, uh, for the next couple of years? This is again self-reported. But we're able to follow through, through national clearinghouse data where our students end up. So seventy-eight point eight percent of respondents, our senior respondents, told us they're headed to a four-year university, which is, um, very typical for most, most classes. Um, the purple kind of sliver there, um, and the, um, and the red sliver should, I'm sorry. The orange sliver should somewhat be connected. We have about ten to fifteen percent of our students who are telling us they're going on to technical school. That's been an in, slow increase, but an increased number for our students. And then you see military and taking a gap here and so forth, um, in terms of plans. What are you going to study? Um, we included, uh, this is based on the sixteen career clusters that we have and those never change. But always just a good reminder, our students are telling us they're going into business, health, science and technical fields. And of course, just behind them, uh, is more of the social services and education, which is exciting. Generally, we've seen undecided as the, uh, most commonly reported answer to our, to this question. And that seems to be changing a little bit too over the course of the last few years. So that's kind of exciting. We never say academic exploration is about pigeonholing students and making them pick what they want to be when they grow up at fourteen years old and following that pathway. It's just continuously understanding what are the resources up front of you? Do you know what kind of things you'd like to do and so on and so forth? So we see the undecided number remain there. I think that's positive. We want students to continue to explore, but this is what they're telling us. Of those seniors that are attending college, this is how the numbers broke down. Again, this is self-reported. Um, we do have counselors that are going to be completing a data study this summer, a little bit more statistically on the top schools that students attend. At Arrowhead and what were their predictors for admissions? So we're looking forward to seeing some of that data. Um, UW Madison remains our top choice and, and represents about twenty percent of, of those going on to college. CTC nine percent, Whitewater nine percent, so on. UW Milwaukee, La Crosse, Twin Cities. And other Wisconsin private and public schools making up fifteen percent. Um, the other seven percent kids listed a lot of schools, this is only a spattering. Uh, Brown Georgetown, Iowa Purdue, Arizona Notre Dame, Northwestern, Brighton, Loyola, DePaul, Alabama. Colorado Boulder, Indiana, West Point Naval Academy, George, George Washington University and many, and I'm literally, there were, um, dozens and dozens. Whole lot of the survey. What do seniors appreciate about their experience at Arrowhead? I asked them what they appreciate about their experience. And I, we asked them, uh, what they would change about their experience at Arrowhead. A lot of them took the time to tell us what they think Arrowhead should change, which isn't really answering the question, but we still take a look at that. Um, and this doesn't change from year to year very much, um, as, as you can imagine. They, they appreciate the memories they've made and the teachers and staff. Um, come up very often and how much they've been able to have support, uh, while they've been here and, and the opportunities that they've had. And most often AP classes are mentioned that they've been appreciative of those kind of opportunities. Took a quote there, I appreciate the wide range of opportunities and type of classes I could choose. AP program was very helpful and my teachers were always happy to assist whenever I had an issue, wanted advice or needed extra help. And there's lots of comments like that. I, I, I knew we needed to keep our presentation shorter, that I couldn't include that. What would they change? The most common answer was nothing. So that's kind of exciting. Uh, would have gotten involved in more, uh, extracurricular or different extracurricular opportunities and would have taken a different course load. And variety of adjectives associated with that, a, a different, closer, easier course, or harder course load and so on and so forth. Um, I just pulled out one quote, if I could change anything, it would be to join more clubs and not be so stressed out when one little thing goes wrong. Uh, I've learned over the years that it's okay not to be perfect and it's okay to make mistakes and learn from them. So I would change how hard I was on myself and do more things that make me happy, very insightful by one of our seniors. Um, other areas of relative strength and growth, as we think about our academic exploration work, we, we continue to see good strength. Kids are definitely getting into career interest, understanding what's involved in their careers, uh, more than they were a few years ago. Uh, developing that career plan and then aligning their career interests with their course load. This is definitely a strength of what we've been able to see. It's been, it's been duplicated now over many years. Our areas of growth, um, along the lines of what I mentioned before with pathways, continue to build awareness of the pathways, continue to find tools. To help students understand how the courses that they take at Arrowhead lend to opportunities they may have in careers. And students report to us the continued need for job search techniques, um, which is, uh, certainly if they take career and technical education classes. Or multiple classes for the pathway, they, they get this information, but that continuously comes up for us. We're having conversations about how to build, um, digital job boards, how to get, uh, job boards and, and, and more employers in. And talking with, with students more often about those techniques, especially through our CTE classes, but other opportunities as well. So, so that's kind of the feedback that our seniors gave us on these so far this year. Before I transition, any questions? I know you guys have been sitting a long time. So I'll talk really quickly about another area of focus for us this year was student engagement. You might recall when we did our, our areas of focus and we talked with the board, if you were at that meeting, why we wanted to re-engage. Or, or refocus our discussion on engagement. And really, the teaching and learning team, um, talked about the need to return to some sense of normalcy. And build on that active learning. Students have been sitting, many of them have had in hybrid learning. They were out for multiple times due to COVID. And we lost something in that. We wanted, we knew we were going to be back in school full-time. We didn't know what the COVID experience would be. But we really wanted to engage in back to hands-on, moving around the room, kids interacting with one another. We know that's best practice for students. Our teachers do an awesome job with that. So we really just spent a lot more time talking about engagement and even reigniting the focus on engagement. Part of what we did there, um, was, uh, in our October in-service, for example, we brought Dave Burgess. Who wrote a book called Teach Like a Pirate. He's kind of, uh, very gregarious and, and outgoing character. But he inspired our teachers to think differently about engagement. It isn't just about being goofy or being funny or being on stage. But really hooking students into learning. And that, that kind of a tone about engagement continued throughout the years. Different departments broke down what engagement looks like for their particular disciplines and, and, and course areas. Um, we've talked a little bit about the work of Jen Townsend. Jennifer Townsend from Elmore worked individually with various teachers. To talk about what engagement looks like for different types of learners. And that's going to be the continued work that we have for professional learning even this summer. Talk about those learner agency skills that we really are concerned about. We talk about cell phone use and the distractions that we have. The teaching and learning team spent time looking at the five tasks engagement. And part of that learn, learning was really digging deep into understanding not just what makes an engaged student. But what makes a disengaged student. And distraction is one of, of course, the biggest things. You can talk to any teacher and they'll tell you, this is, this is a concern we have for. For whether students are engaged or not. So that continuous learning about what makes a student engaged, what we know about disengagement, both at the classroom level. And at the, at the system level, because we want to be making sure that, um, students feel connected to their school and their, you, Greg talked about connection and association. To the school. I think that's an important part of why students feel engaged at a school level and when they might be engaged at the classroom level as well. So our teachers did a great job. I observed teachers with a specific, um, view of just looking at engagement. And I commented and, uh, uh, on cognitive engagement, what were students, what are brain, students' brains engaged in? Behavioral engagement, were students, um, you know, following the tasks that they were asked to do? And then there's an emotional engagement piece, which is really hard to measure and see, but how did they seem to feel about what they were learning? How connected were they, uh, to their students and to the learning, to what was happening in the classroom? And that was where I offered some feedback throughout the year. And I was really pleased to see what teachers were bringing back into the classroom. There, I did see that movement. I did see that active learning strategies. I did see that productive dialogue. But what teachers told us was it took a lot to build that back for our students. Um, and to tell them, like, this is what it means to have a productive dialogue or discussion conversation. Because they were used to either doing that through screen or in some cases not doing it all because we were, we were kind of in a weird time. So the teaching and learning team will take a look at what we, what we learned this year. And as part of our retreat that we have next year, we'll talk about, or, um, next week, I should say, we'll talk about what do we want to do next with engagement? What, what do we like about that area of focus? It's not like a measurable goal necessarily. It's softer. Um, but what, what have we noticed? What do we maybe want to hone in with a little bit more detail for next year? Or, or maybe we need to divert our attention to something, something different altogether. But that was another area of focus for us. Questions about that? Other highlights, um, the teaching and learning team took a look at departments, like I mentioned, a lot of focus and energy was put into the adjustments. We had to make pacing, slow down, meet kids where they're at, take a look at where, um, what our assessments needed to look like. Um, that were perhaps different than they were last year. Um, we threw all our assessments online and the need to do that during COVID in twenty. And then in twenty twenty-one. And so we talked about the integrity of assessments and a lot of our student, uh, our teachers rather. Needed to look at that a little bit differently and think about assessment differently and rewrite assessments. As you know, we engaged in, um, some schedule exploration. We will continue to explore and learn, uh, about what those possibilities may look like. And, and the board has been engaged in that process as we just started it. Um, we proposed some new courses this year. Uh, taking a look at some gaps in our, in our program and trying to fill those gaps. We'll continue to do that moving forward. And we've built supports through and networked through co-plan and co-serv, which I know Adam is going to mention when he talks about student supports. So looking ahead, TLT, we're looking at ways that we can bridge and build and maintain our eight-nine transition with the feeder schools. And some specific areas, some specific disciplines, they're already dialed into that work. The English Language Arts Department just met with all our feeder schools. Um, two weeks ago. And so other disciplines are looking at ways to engage the feeder schools for that eight-nine transition. We might be reigniting some of that that we haven't seen in a while. We're going to continue to build out those pathways as we talked about. And starting next week, we're going to be doing some, uh, data deep dive to look at the continuous improvement or specific areas where we want to hold in on. School-wide learning objectives or what, um, recommendations for, um, improvement needs to look like as we think about the twenty-two, twenty-three school year in teaching and learning. Any questions? Always happy to answer questions. I'm going to turn the, uh, mic and the clicker over my friend out.
All right, so, um, student services, end of year, uh, report. Hopefully it works out well with our beginning of your report back in September. Um, one of the biggest things we looked at doing, uh, was coming back off of COVID. We wanted to build out more opportunities for our students, whether that was bringing back opportunities or creating new opportunities. You, I believe I've talked a lot about, uh, passion project of ours is establishing the manufacturing experience for students in special education. Who typically weren't thought of as, uh, being able to maybe enter that field or, or get a start into that field. And maybe their families and themselves and, uh, see themselves going into that field, but we know that it's a great career to get into. So I'm proud to announce that that's going to start, um, in September of next year. Currently, we have three students with three sites. We're actively working on a fourth, uh, site. We have the students ready to go and, yeah. So I got a fourth student very interested and now I have a fifth student. So it, it's building speed with our students. So now we just need the outlets for them, but building the relationships with those businesses, as Greg and Sue talked about, is extremely important for us. We brought back Lobster Boyle, which is a great event for not just our students, but for our community. Getting people who don't typically come to our school into the school and seeing great things that we do. We were able to partner with our manufacturing. Uh, classes and students and kind of do a joint event there. We switched over to daily cafe Arrowhead, which again, you heard when those students and teachers came into the board meeting. To talk about what they do in that realm. That was huge for us because our students are getting more and more repetitions. In the world of work and vocational training skills, uh, big switch for the people in that area. We brought on a new Special Olympics team. Special Olympics basketball was something that our community was asking for, for a really long time. And we were able to get that up and running this year and with COVID and regulations. And maybe you saw on the news that, I think Florida parents are suing, uh, Special Olympics because the Special Olympics wouldn't let them play if they weren't vaccinated. We got around that this year because Special Olympics was, uh, making, uh, it difficult to play. So we switched it over to Adam Holt's, uh, Intermural Basketball Association. Instead of being some of the Special Olympics, that we were able to, uh, keep practicing and, uh, have some games as well. And then if you recall, when our counselors came in for peers and peers, we had talked a little bit on game lunch. Where, uh, it's an opportunity every Wednesday for students to want a little bit of a different lunch experience, where they're able to go into one of our open rooms. And play board games and get to know their fellow classmates a little bit better, make new connections, make new friends. And learn all about the, uh, uh, outback of Australia's deadliest, uh, predators through bingo. So that was a, a huge gift for them. It's great in there. Uh, if you ever walk around the school on a Wednesday, maybe get a chance to talk in there and just see that in action. It's a, it's a lively group.
My son participated in the lunch and he wanted it.
Yeah.
He focused the ten days and ten times in a row to get the free T-shirt. I think that's what it was. It was the big crisis.
We've got some young staff in that department and it's great because they just know how to grow her social media. So they are just getting games donated. Molly Soroka sub-tweeted Uno and just took a picture and said, game time lunch, big hit. The kids are playing Uno. They said, you know, Uno then tweeted back at her and said, that's great to see. And she's like, actually, we need more games. And so they sent us more games of Uno. Uh, Nick Linger has been able to get prizes and treats and all this stuff. So it's become a real, uh, self-sufficient, uh, uh, program. Challenges. Sue talked about this and, uh, some things that were new that came out of this year. Incoming freshmen, academics, emotions, behaviors were behind that of what we typically see for our ninth grade students. We had them more at the seventh grade level, not necessarily for academics when I say that, for emotions and behaviors. I talked to everybody. I knew in education this fall and I said, what are you seeing? Seventh grade teachers told me they had fifth graders in class, fifth graders, fifth grade teachers had third graders. Everybody was about two years behind in emotions and behaviors. And that's a big deal. When you have teachers who are trained and used to working with, uh, people of emotional behavioral ninth grade level. To work with a seventh grade level. Seventh grade middle school behaviors are very different from high school behaviors. That two years makes a big difference. We spent a lot of time and effort this year, especially in those early months. Working through with our staff, um, soon Adam, we're involved in these conversations. How do we get back to basics? What can't these students do right now? What do we need them to do? And how are we going to switch our teaching styles to get them to where they need to be? A lot of time and effort put into that. How long is that going to last for? We don't know. How long are the effects of the, uh, COVID and quarantine and virtual school going to keep impacting that? Again, we don't know. We feel like we got our freshmen up to where they needed to be. We feel like we're more prepared going into next year. That we're not going to be so surprised by if we have students coming in at that younger emotional behavioral level. Uh, we're going to know what we need to do to adapt to it. But again, that remains to be seen.
Any indication from the feeder schools now of the graduating, any great class?
They, yeah, the counselors in school sites, um, they sit in with the counselors in school sites from the feeder schools. Uh, and that happened last week and I haven't been to brief on whether they're seeing that or not. But I think if we remember last year, we didn't get tipped off on that. Everybody was taken by surprise and that's the, uh, middle school teacher in Watertown. That I know and it's the elementary school teachers in Opanahawak that I know just across the board. That was, if you talk to anybody in education this fall, that's what we were talking about. So remains to be seen, but at least we're more prepared for it this year, having gone through it once. Upperclassmen, um, I'm gonna, uh, just hit on the big pieces. We have a, the issue where, uh, students were allowed or able to disengage through the mandatory quarantine period. Plus the ability to do virtual schools. So students who maybe were not always going to connect to school so easily or engage in school easily. They were allowed to do it from their home and be at home and sometimes had to be in another home if you were just because of their mental health or, uh, physical health situations last year. Or it's all that, uh, good stuff. We, we have a overall increase in needs, which is even a third bullet point. But, uh, with upperclassmen, it's a, it's especially stark because we had, uh, two situations at the end of the school year this year that I just haven't seen before. Checking in with our counselors who have been here longer than I had. They're like, yeah, this isn't the way that this usually goes. So typically what happens, students struggling with school, is it going to make the credit requirements for graduation? Most of them pulled together by the end of the school year and walked the stage. We always have some that don't. We always have some that don't make graduation requirements by the end of the school year. They come in the next two weeks in summer school. And they're able to make up the work they needed to make up, obtain the credit. Some take longer, some get into July, but that happens. Um, students who don't graduate, so when you see our graduation numbers and students don't graduate, which again is rare, they're just gone. We don't know what happened though, you know, uh, March, April, May, maybe they don't, and they're just off the face of the earth. We don't know where they are, what they're doing, parents don't know. That's the way that a non-graduate typically happens at Arrowhead. This year we had, uh, two to three students where they're here. They're attending most of the time. We're doing everything under the sun, uh, that we know we need to do, going above and beyond what we've done in the past. And there just didn't seem to be any real sense of urgency to graduate high school. And again, here, compliant, maybe, you know, not attending class as much as we'd like to, just not engaging. And as we talked, we have a, we haven't seen this before. We don't know what they're going to do because there's always that hope. We know like. H S E D, G E D, they're coming back for credit recovery. There's less, I guess, assurance of those students. There's less, I guess, assurance of those students. One of them did tell me that he's going to go for his HSED and it's a relevant CTC, which again is another pathway that that usually happens. So that's good to see. But again, the dispositions of the students have been different. And again, that is the extreme cases of what we're looking at, but we're seeing more and more students where it's harder to bring them back into the fold and engage them within the school. I would say that that's the biggest challenge that we face coming up over the next couple of years because in talking with my staff, it's not favorable, right? So after years of doing this, we can kind of play these situations out and say, hey, this is the profile of this student. We've seen this before. Here's what's likely to happen. We know all the permutations of how their high school career is going to go with a couple of these are like, this is new. So again, in that place, in an overall increase in need, again, less severe than those situations, but those ones are going to be something that we talk a lot about over the next year and it's going to be a big work for our student services department. What's our response going to be in 22, 23? Sue talked about it. I talked to one of our special education teachers about this and she was saying, she said, you know, I'm so glad we made the decision to go to co-plan and co-serve away from cast because the amount of needs, again, going back up to that, that we're seeing within the classroom is greater than we've ever seen before. And we can get to more students with co-plan, co-serve. And now what we're working on is doing it better, doing it more efficiently and having more and more teachers involved in that good planning process and being able to reach more and more of our students and do that good supporting that we know we can do if we plan it out right. Build new opportunities for those who require different education settings. There's more students now that I would say in the, in the past, sometimes families would come and say, my student needs small class sizes, I need 12 students in a class and they need to have the same teacher throughout. But I think there's other ways that we can do this and it would be fine. What we're seeing now is that, yeah, there's some that are requiring a different educational setting earlier on in school. One of the things that our school site counselor, associate principal, principal, team meetings are going to focus on possibly as early as the summer is figuring out a way that we can replicate our alternative ed program at North Campus to have something at South Campus a little bit earlier for students. Again, bringing it forward, of course, in a cost neutral way and shifting some things around. But that's what we're seeing for a need right now is we have to create a family environment for some of these students to do well. So a consistency where we can license a teacher to teach more academic subjects and have that be the same teacher for a small group of students. We can get more pay for our book and talking with everybody around the building. We've seen it either. Some of them have recognized their visitors, their multiples, as well as maybe be able to reach these kids in a different way a little bit earlier. We talked a lot.
What's the reason for that?
Say it.
What's the reason for that?
For needing that? Yeah. Yeah. So some of that is social emotional health. So anxiety tends to play a big role in it. We have students at the school that we spend a lot of time on working with, how can they get into class and get to class and be comfortable being in class? A lot of that has to do with like the changing of courses throughout the day, new, new students, new teachers. There's those pieces. They struggle to even get to school. You imagine it's hard to connect, educate those students and they obtain credits with that manner. Some of them behavioral wise, we know, hey, if they're with Mrs. Myra for the hours that they're with Mrs. Myra, it's great and they work and they do really well, but they can't have Mrs. Myra for all these classes. It takes a special kind of individual. The occult is that individual up at our campus. And we know once we get them to the end, they do really well. We just want them to have a more meaningful experience at South Campus and maybe keep them from having to go into alternative education route once they get up to, to North Campus. So right now we have more needs than we have seats at alternative education at North Campus. So we always have to be creative on how we help these students find the location, you can tell our graduation rates to that. But we'd like to get to be students earlier in their career. Continue to foster a sense of belongingness at Arrowhead. We talked in the fall, that's a very important one for all of us in the building. And one of those measurements where I'd love to say, this is a really great indicator for how we're doing as a school. Do kids, do students want to be here as the building walks to any of their success? And then continue working to bridge the transition between high school and post-secondary life. Great setup for the next slide. Post, so special education after high school, I shared this back in September for the previous year. This is our one for not last year's graduating class, but the graduating class before that. So we're always about a year behind. Proud of this one because this happened in a COVID year when businesses were closing and there was less opportunities for employment before we had anybody under the sign we could get a job. So it was right in that middle of time. So again, we look at higher education. Our students went on to any kind of higher education, four-year, two-year, tech school, anything like that. Arrowhead, 54% of our survey special education students who graduated went into higher education. The next, and this is how the state slices it, I says that this is why I put it up this way. Higher education plus competitive employment. So now this combines that 54.29% along with anybody who is getting full-time or it's a certain threshold of hours of employment with non-disabled peers, we jump up to 85.72%. And that last column is just, are you engaged in doing something in the workforce or employment? So it really just loosens up those restrictions and then what's left over are, are you doing nothing? Right now, you know, essentially being at home and, and just doing social outings. And so even we're down to 5.71%. So again, very proud of this number. This is what we're always working towards as special education. This will be end result of three to five, three to five year old services, pre-K, elementary school. This is, this is where we get to the relationships with businesses and we find what we call doing a warm handoff where we connect the students to what they're doing next, services at WCPC, the services at their four-year college, the place that we can get to, get them employed. We talk a lot and you'll hear me talk and have talked a lot about not just getting a job, but getting a career for our students is very important for us. Next, Amy and Sue and I met a week ago or so and we talked about just touching on some social emotional work that we do at Arrowhead, just to announce that came up at our last board meeting. And it's something that we do all throughout the year. So first up is PBIS, also known as Positive Behavioral Interventional Support. And what that is and how we use it at Arrowhead is to create simple, easy to remember expectations for students at Arrowhead. There's an example right up there. Be appropriate, be respectful, be responsible. The idea behind that is that it can be applied broadly in all situations. So when we go to wings and we say, students, here's the cafeteria, what are your expectations in the cafeteria? Be appropriate, be respectful, be responsible, right? And let's maybe a little bit different in the cafeteria than the library, but overall I can remember what I'm supposed to do. I remember what those expectations are. I see it all around the school. I see it in my teacher's syllabus of how I'm supposed to do that in these classes. And then when students fall short of those expectations, we bring it right back to those expectations, like, you know, asking the question, were you being responsible when you threw balloons at John? And then, you know, in the car. You know, were you being appropriate during this, this example? So again, what used to happen in education prior to PBIS is that we used to just be negative and talk about what you did wrong, what you did wrong, what you did wrong. If anybody's been a coach in any point in their life, if anybody's been in education at any point in their life, you tell the students or the athletes what to do, not just what not to do. You have to coach them up in terms of what we, we want them to do. Next up is trauma-informed pair or trauma-sensitive schools. They're used interchangeably. The idea behind this piece of work is that when they study who has had an adverse childhood experience in their life. So it's a list of experiences that they've been to be adverse childhood experiences in their life before the age of 18. They cannot find different results no matter where they go, who they do it with, socioeconomic status, area of the country, anything like that. That shows that the number's not in and around 66%. It's remarkable how much that keeps getting replicated. So you imagine, so in a classroom, you've got two thirds of your students have gone through an adverse childhood experience. It's impossible to know who has what and how they've been impacted. Jeff Gross and I might have been through the same exact adverse childhood experience. You might be completely fine from it. I might not be. How are we supposed to know all this information? I, I say it often, I know a lot of it. I think I know the iceberg tip of it and not what's underneath. So what can we do in our schools? What can our staff do in every situation to be supportive of students that have gone through this kind of trauma in their life? Listen, ask questions first, right? Why is your head down? Is there something going on? Not, you need to do this, you know, what's wrong with you, kind of harping at them, rather, hey, I noticed you're doing this. I want to, you know, talk to me more about that. What's going on? Is there anything I can do? Co-plan, we can build all the solutions in the world, but if the student's not on board with it and we don't have some kind of mutual understanding or agreement, it's not going to do a bit of good. So we work with students and we work with families to develop a, a plan to move forward if something's not working right. I have to miss school because of X, Y, and Z, or there's a hard time right now at home. Hey, let's work around that. You know, I have these expectations for you in class, but I think that I could be a little bit flexible in terms of deadlines. And then build rapport. So they were always doing, we talked about that sense of belongingness at Arrowhead, always building rapport with students, right? If students want to work with you, they're going to do more for your class. If they don't want to work with you, they're going to do less. So always build a rapport, making sure students feel comfortable at school. Couple of other ones, the school success program, which again is our kind of mental health school within a school program. This helps teach students who are not emotionally ready yet for a whole day of school, how to do school. I touched on when Chris asked the question, that's a lot of what goes on within our school success program. Again, that is a program that saves us a lot of money at the end of the day because these are students that might otherwise need to go to an alternative school instead. So when you go to an alternative school, cheapest you can get out of that board is about $33,000 with transportation costs thrown in there. And so this runs us about $55,000. So once we have two students in there, we're saving a lot of money. And the, and Arrowhead will run four to five students in there any given year. So that's been a great gift for us. Growth group at South Campus run by our school psychologists and counselors. Students are asked if they want to be in this group. There's no profile of students for the, for the group. They're running at different hours of the day. And what growth group is predicated upon is students don't have a lot of meaningful conversations with each other, especially in the age of social media. They don't have these real interactions and conversations. And the person who developed this main theory is that's why we're seeing an increase in mental health lead amongst our youth. And so what they do in the, the group, it takes a long time to get going, as you might think, is Brendan, when you look at me like that, it makes me think you're paying attention to me. All right. And then Tim might say, Adam, when you said that about Brandon, it made me think that you appreciate him listening to you. That is tough for students to do. I'm going to give real feedback to one of my peers on what I think, either the way somebody is sitting, the way somebody's looking at me, the way somebody said something, something that somebody does thinks about me. And the counselors in school sites take data on how many of those girl statements they can get kind of within the thing. It doesn't go as quickly as I did there. There will be teenage banter back and forth. And then somebody might take the opportunity to say, hey, when you did this, it made me think this. Okay, we have a girl statement and maybe we'll move forward. We get more and more of those. Students love being in this group. I talked to them about, you know, if we have a schedule change, if we go to advisory period, this is something that they feel like they could reach more students on. So they would see that as a big gift, but that's a pretty successful program for us. Special education programming, continuing on the theme of social emotional work at Arrowhead. We have students that have IEPs, Individualized Educational Program, specifically for building social skills because the social skills aren't at a level that they need to be at specifically for anxiety. So teaching them how to manage their anxiety and how to reduce anxiety symptoms when they're in an anxiety provoking situation. How to work with their depression symptoms, how to reduce depression symptoms when they're in a, in a situation where they're feeling those symptoms are coming on stronger. And then we run the gamut of mental illnesses within our program as well. And then finally, restorative practices. So we're sort of practices, student-to-student conflict or sometimes student-to-staff conflict. When we have that, making sure that students and staff have a chance to get together and, and talk through and do a mediation with a, usually an administrator on how did that action make me feel? Where was I coming from when I said this? How can we start to move forward and pass this? One of the things I'll say is that since Adam came on board, we, we found that we're on the same page with a lot of our theories on discipline and how to, how to build a strong school and a, and a positive school. And some of the conversations, the tougher conversations we've had to have with families when students have messed up. I feel like we've gotten to a good place with because Adam comes from a standpoint of, we're going to work with the family. We're going to work with the student because what we have here is somebody who's not meeting expectations and we're going to, we're going to help them meet expectations. Because that's what's going to matter to that student when they get out of Arrowhead one day is that they can function within a society or a workplace. Any questions on those pieces? The growth group meets during, because of the way our schedule's set up, the counselors look at when the best study hall period might be, which is kind of the work of a school psych and counselors, like trying to match up study halls that they can get students together. They all told me what hours they made and I have since forgotten that. But again, with the, it's something like an advisory period where you have all students off at once, they would be able to get more students pulled into those, those groups. So groups sit around eight to 12 students and they've been doing it. Thomas Stuber's been doing it the longest. They've all been doing it for really the past two years with the group that we have right now. And they can tell you a lot of information about how a group works well, who does it. The kind of students that you need in a group to make it work well, you got to have at least one to two, they're going to be lively conversers in there. Otherwise it tends to stay quiet, but you can't get much more than that because other kids have to feel safe to start conversing. So they got down to science and, you know, it's a program that they'd really like to continue to grow. So like I said, they're, they're liking the results of the student's report, really enjoying having that in there, feeling like they're taking that then and putting it into practice in their everyday lives. They're not just saying those girl statements within the group. They're actually doing that more with their front server, which is huge. So we want to try to spread that and hopefully have more meaningful conversations with our peers, not just Snapchats. Anything else? All right.
All right. I love my colleagues. No exaggeration. I think we are the best seven team, but I know it's going to frequently follow me to be the most succinct. So only five more slides. So hang on there. This is my scope. If I ever look like this, it's time for me to give up. This is Andrew Me in the spring. Chris Beeler had his way. So I hope I don't look like that. It's been a great year. I, I'm really fortunate to be here, happy to be here. I just want to share with you briefly kind of what my year looked like and some of my experiences. So I shared with you at the beginning of the year, oh, that's a little cut off. My goal is to meet with every staff member, every staff member that meets teacher and support staff. I was at about 15% when I presented in, I think, September, October, whenever I presented, I said 74.1% of the faculty I was able to meet with this year. Sitting down for an hour with 104 teachers and 28% of our support staff so far. So that's still a goal of mine is to continue to, to meet with those staff members. And here's what we talk about. So we first start about just getting into the person, letting me know a little bit about where they are, where they come from. Then I asked five very deliberate questions so that I can theme out specifics from them personally. You get a lot of different results and conversations when you talk to a teacher individually than when you talk in a group. This really gives me great feedback on what they feel is important to them here. And so I take that and I, I theme out ideas and I rank priorities based off that. And I'll take all of that and I'll take it to our, our leadership team this summer and we'll talk about it. So a lot of time, it's a lot of time. When you think about it, it's at least an hour plus setting up the meeting and then jotting down my notes and then beaming everything out. It's, it's averages a little over two hours per staff member that I meet with. So it's, it's about six weeks of my, so far 36 weeks here. But I find tremendous value in it. I will circle back in the future and meet with everybody again who wants to, but it's a much shorter conversation there to check in to see how, how we're growing and because part of my job is to respond to their needs. And it's my job to take. Uh, and it's my job to take, um, to take out, uh, personal agendas and personal needs, and take out agendas and needs of, of the larger group and respond to those. So, this, this is a practice that I do, and I, I, I really find it beneficial, and, uh, so I just wanted to share that with you. Yeah, that's where a lot of my fall was spent. Themes and conclusions. So, I was witness to a very flexible, creative, and patient staff. Uh, the, the, the staff here, uh, from our teachers down to our, uh, support staff, I mean, it's, uh, cooks everybody. Um, uh, they're, they're doing great work. Past two years, effects are still impacting, you heard both Sue and Adam talk about that. Teaching now is harder than it was three years ago and anytime before that. Uh, there are different expectations, there are different students in the classroom right now. Um, there are, um, uh, refocusing that our teachers need to do of, of, of expectations that came naturally to students for decades. And, um, and our, our, our staff are challenged with that, and, uh, they're doing a tremendous job coming out of it. Uh, so they're working, they're working harder than they've ever had to, and in my opinion, they're, they're keeping the same rigor of education and learning that they need to while working through all those additional challenges. So, it's very, um, uh, it was, it was very positive to see that, to be able to experience that. Um, so, good has come from it. We always wanna look at the good that, that can come from the, the challenges of the past couple of years. We've seen a different type of collaboration in our staff, because they were forced to, they're forced to align in different ways. Um, uh, and we see unique and different, uh, differentiated teaching. Uh, one of the very cool things is our, our classrooms have been flipped a lot. So, we see teachers, I think, uh, Laura touched on this in a different meeting, our teachers have videotaped their lessons, and that was something that they had to do, uh, during COVID learning, and now they do it on purpose. Why? Because you can sit and listen to me lecture in class, or you can sit and lecture, listen to me lecture at home, and we can actually do work together in a classroom. So, you've seen kind of a shift, and that creates higher levels of learning, when you don't need to listen to me for twenty minutes. You can listen to me for twenty minutes at home, that's easy. If I send you home to work and you have issues, you don't have an access to me. But if I send the easy part home and bring the hard part back to the classroom, we're getting to a different type of learning, and that's kind of been, uh, pushed harder, uh, by the, by the past couple of years. So, it's really cool to see those kind of things be a benefit that's come out of this, that our staff have really, uh, done a nice job with. Um, they've had to be more consistent across classes, and they have a greater understanding of their students' lives. When you're staring through the camera for the past two years and you see what our students experience, when a kid is home for ten days and you're trying to work with the family, you get a really different insight into families and the students that you're working with, and it create, it forces empathy, um, as you work with your students. And so, you, you have a much better understanding, and that helps you, to some of Adam's points just a minute ago, it helps you teach a student at their level. Um, so, so those are all very positives that have come out of it. So, we don't wanna look at the past couple of years and just say, uh, it was a struggle, we wanna be done with it, because good things did come up. And those are observed this year. Um, there's observed need to regalvanize the school, uh, to some points of pride prior to twenty nineteen. What it did do is it, it, is it siloed us in a, in many different ways. Part of the reason I share that huge list at, um, graduation is we have a captive audience who can hear everything, right? A lot of times, our students and our families get into theater, and they're in theater, and that's where they are, they're on stage every day, and they don't know what else is going on. And this is a great way to expose them to all the other successes and accomplishments and avenues that our students have gone. Um, Greg touched on it too, as part of my job is to better sell ourselves, what we have accomplished, what our students do, what our school does. Um, so that's a big part of it. And, uh, a lot of our, uh, a lot of our activities and actions have, have been forced into smaller pockets, uh, by COVID for safety and just, uh, and functionality reasons. And now, our, our hope and goal is to break that back up. Um, so that was part of what, what, uh, the focus and the conversations were this year. Um, we have every element that it takes to be great school here, we are a great school. One of the things I've always said is, uh, Jim Collins writes a book, uh, Good to Great and then Great by Choice. Part of my, um, uh, I, I hate cliches, but like the motif under what, uh, the conversations that I have to have with our leadership team is, we wanna make sure that we, um, uh, we don't fail because, uh, because we rest on our laurels, right? And I give you a couple of examples, Circuit City, MySpace, Candles, Outhouses, Outhouses is my favorite one, because everybody laughs at it, right? That had a purpose one day, that was, that was top of the line, if you had an outhouse, you were, you're rich. Nobody wants an outhouse now, right? Circuit City was top of their, uh, top of their industry at one point. Hardware, technology hardware is still a very popular thing, but they didn't adapt, they didn't modify, they didn't meet the need of, uh, of people. Um, and so we wanna make sure that we are constantly reflecting and assessing our own work, um, and, and make sure that we don't fall into that trap. So, good conversations about those types of things and making sure that Arrowhead continues to push and lean forward to, uh, to do great things. Um, so, the, uh, as I shared, uh, I'll spend the summer, uh, some time with, uh, with our administrative team, talking about kind of the smaller details and the nuances of, of my observations this year. Student cabinet, uh, my favorite part of this year, uh, were these students. Um, they have an, an uncanny ability to, to have a conversation in a way that is, uh, where they care for each other. Uh, they're much better at adults and, and being able to say things and disagree, uh, in a way that, that is, um, beneficial and constructive. Uh, so the conversation's been great. I just gave you a list of some of the things that I just went to our agenda and just piled on, um, some of the things that we talked about. I mean, everything from as simple as, uh, the door signs that we did for teachers to, uh, to student wellness, um, to sleep, uh, to those kind of things. So, the, the conversations are all over the place, great group of students. Um, I had a student actually today, um, showing interest, said, when are you gonna put that out again? Because I wanna be a part of it, I heard it was a lot of fun and a lot of good conversations happened there. So, uh, that's one of, one of my favorite parts of this year was meeting with those students, uh, we met by, we, every two weeks. The plan, my plan is somewhat frustrating for many. Um, so this year was a lot of just learning, considering, uh, and consider the obvious, urgent, or easy. So, traffic is one, it was one of the first things that was said to me, that's a pain here, um, it's a pinch point. Uh, I talked to the admin team, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars to greet different rows, and, and we have to meet with the city and that kind of thing. Well, we got a little bit creative and, and we let our study hall students out ten minutes early. That was huge. This whole student body recognized it, you can feel it when you leave, uh, our parking lot. It didn't have any impact on, on learning, the students who were released ten minutes early, we did not allow anybody who was credit deficient to leave early. So, it was students who can handle that, left early, ten minutes, got our kids out safely, helped parking, and it didn't cost us half a million dollars. Okay, so these are simple things that we looked at, that actually came out of student cap, okay? Morale was another piece, coming out of a difficult couple of years. Uh, we did a unified assembly for the first time in a very long time, everybody on the football field, it was great. Uh, we, uh, just last night, we flipped flapjacks for faculty flaps, I don't know what it was called, what is? Faculty flapjacks finals. Yeah. So, this came out of our ear, this is not my idea, this came out of our earhead. Way Group, another way to bring students together. Uh, Laura was there flipping pancakes, Adam was there flipping pancakes, Sue was there, we had a lot of people there, a lot of our staff. Best part about it is, if you looked out, everybody's eating pancakes and nobody's on the phone, they're all talking to each other, they're interacting, it was a break, it was really cool to see. Um, so things like that, just little, little pieces this year that, that I could be a part of, that we could do. Our staff, uh, was much more involved in the homecoming parade, we had our own float, we had a, a cookout, just things like that, to start to get back to, um, you know, some of those things that, that were pride points and, and where we hung our hat here, uh, before, um, before two thousand nineteen. Um, the schedule was one of those big ones that popped up, it surfaced in all of my conversations, seventy, uh, seventy-some percent of my conversations with staff in some way talked about forty minutes being a struggle, or resource needed, or our students need a different amount of time, or conflicts, or that kind of thing. And so that's part of what, um, came from, where that conversation came from. The other, the student cabinet shared concerns about their stress levels, their lack of sleep, their conflicts when they're trying to schedule classes, those sort of things. So, the schedule obviously is not something that's gonna be tackled in, in, uh, in, in a year or in a month or whatever, it's gonna be a much bigger conversation. Sue's done a great job leading several different groups and walking our staff, um, through different levels of conversations there. Um, I am very, um, one of the hardest things that I do is I don't say much in year one. Uh, try doing that, right? We're all fixers by nature, and there are a lot of conversations that I've had where I've just sat back and listened, it's a very tough thing to do, uh, but, uh, but that's always my goal in year one, it's just to listen as much as I can, process as much as I can, and kind of share out themes and ideas. So, that takes me to next year, the hope is to be actively experiencing and adjusting, meaning get into classes more, uh, get, uh, into more, uh, organic conversations with our staff. Uh, get deeper into everything that, uh, all of the themes that, that were experienced this year. Um, more, uh, grow the structures and events that we experienced. So, an example, we just went through graduation, we have some ideas to grow that, to, to make it smoother, to make it better, those kind of things. So, everything that I went through in year one, I tried not to have, uh, make too many changes unless there was something really just egregious or, or unsafe or something along that lines. Try to experience everything, and then we go to, um, year two where we start to try to make it better, try to grow it, um, try to create better opportunities for students and staff, and then engage with all staff on those core conversations that we, uh, that we were able to theme out. So, year one is very hard, and it's frustrating for some staff, because they want me to come in and say and do and move and change, right? That, that, that's some of the hope of, um, having, um, somebody new, but, um, but, um, there's, there's too much imbalance when you do that, and too much risk, um, without understanding the full picture. So, year one is a very patient year. It's very, um, challenging, and year two, we start to get a little more active and a little more involved. And I did just wanna share that list with you again, okay, I appreciate you sharing it, um, it's just an incredible list. Uh, uh, you can look at other schools and where it says state title, and ours, it'll say conference title, when it says, uh, you know, thirty-six on their ACT, it'll say above thirty on their ACT. I, I don't, uh, uh, it, it's incredible, um, uh, the achievements that our students make. I did, I spoke at the North Lake, and I do wanna be clear that we know it's not nine twelve, right? Um, this is, even though we're not a K-12 district, our feeder schools do a tremendous job of giving us great students, our families do a tremendous job of, of, um, creating, uh, very strong and ethical and, and, uh, students with great work ethic and, and great character. And, um, so, to my comment a few slides back, we have everything that it takes to, to just continue to do great things here. So, um, I've appreciated my time, I can't thank Laura enough for calling me about, what, uh, ten months ago, no, fourteen months ago. Yeah, um, yeah, so really enjoyed my year, it's been awesome. Uh, thank you to all of you, uh, for allowing me to be here, and, uh, hopefully, year two continues to, to do good things. That's fast.
That sounds great.
Before we move on, I just wanna comment, I wanna thank our organizational development team, our OBT, we call it, uh, our administrative team, is just amazing, and I've told them multiple times recently that, thank God for them. They are so good at what they do. Their, their effort, their time, their concern for kids, their experience, their expertise is amazing to me. And those of you that were at our one o'clock session with a couple of legislators, one of those legislators talked about schools and saving money and condensing. And his comment is well-taken, that if you have a whole bunch of schools with two hundred kids, for instance, if you combine them together to have a school of six hundred, you can save money. And one of the examples he gave was, uh, physical plant costs. He also talked about reducing administrative services, there's too many administr, these are my words, too many administrators that are expensive. I would tell you that Arrowhead, I didn't say it then, but Arrowhead, our ratio of administration to students is much lower than the state average. So, we have less administrators than the state average, but look at what all of these people do. They spend countless hours and they really do a great job. So, I just want to recognize them publicly in front of the board, because they are just superstars.
Thank you for embracing your, uh, it's pretty obvious that you've done so, and it's much appreciated.
Had you planned on leaving your last job?
I did not. No, I, in fact, I think I told Laura no, uh, when you first reached out, and then reached out again, and we had a conversation. Yeah.
Right.
So, that's right. Yeah, thanks, thanks, thank you for coming. Yeah, I also wanted to, uh, call out administration, uh, to, to, uh, to give them some kudos, uh, with regards to, uh, scheduling. Um, I know that, you know, our, our schedule is, is challenging, and I know that there's a lot of work being done behind the scenes for, uh, you know, new, uh, new ideas in the future. But, uh, when, uh, uh, on an individual basis, you also look at situations, uh, one of them that came to the table from, from our family. Uh, and, uh, we, we, my family specifically really appreciates the hard work you do to, um, work through situations that are challenging, um, to, to come up with a, a resolution that's, that's gonna be advantageous for the students, so thank you.
Okay. That was fantastic, thank you all. Okay, next up, uh, communication comments from the members of the public. I will take a moment and read the rules. Well, there's only one person up here. Can we forego the rules? No, the rules are.
I think I might be able to tell them to you.
John, you probably could. The only one on the list, first up, is John.
You've stayed here long enough, and you start to realize most of your concerns are already addressed, you just listen. Um, no, what I, what I, what I came here today to talk to you about, um, was serendipitously, a lot has been presented. I didn't know Greg was gonna be here, he'd be teaching me what I was writing. Um, so I want to applaud the administration, uh, for the compelling and insightful overview of social emotion learning, um, and the examples that you provided from the perspectives of classroom or practitioners, um, in the meeting on the, uh, on the eleventh of May, in the, uh, interim meeting that I believe was held, um, as well as what we heard today. Um, so Donna, um, uh, the Addams, uh, Sue, um, and of course Greg. It proves that educational paradigms and methods like these are vital in connecting students with force material, the kids with curriculum. Um, and, and that overview was reinforced by what, what Greg said and what I wrote here in an article in EdWe, uh, which you can go and, and find for yourselves, um, on his cross-country search for best practices in education, and SEL was among those practices, as you heard. Um, I confess I was concerned coming in, um, that, uh, from the proceedings in the policy committee on June second, that missed, seemed to mischaracterize or had a distorted conception of SEL, and that might become another issue, much in the same way that critical race theory did. Um, and it wants us to tread carefully with that. Um, and I think understanding what these things are is the first step in doing that. Um, because if we don't get it right, um, we're gonna get distracted from all the very important things that we need to be working on. And I want to offer a few of these, there are only seven, um, but from, from a parent's perspective, are the things that I'm more excited about working on, um, receiving work on. One, creating a safe and positive learning experience that unlocks potential for all the students. Teaching the truth about where we've been, where we are now, and what the possibilities are in the future. Enhancing connections and interactions between schools and communities. Uh, navigating enrollment and funding challenges to build a sustainable education system for the future, and I think the legislative advocacy that was a touch, that was discussed this afternoon is part of that. Um, learning from our experience during the pandemic in order to better prepare for future emergencies, health or otherwise. Um, attracting and developing and retaining the best teaching talent. And lastly, continuously maintaining, improving, and enhancing our assets and infrastructure to support educators and students. And so I'm, I'm asking that when we, we start to go through some of the issues that emerge, that come into this group, um, that we try and keep focused on some of those bigger issues, those, that's the hard work. Um, I think some of those other issues, I might argue that they're not issues at all, but they certainly fall down in private. So, that's the, uh, respect from this parent, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, as long as we're, you don't have to be signed up, if anyone wanted to offer anything? Okay. Uh, moving on to committee reports, first up is Chairperson Hunter with Portilla.
Okay, we had a six forty-five AM meeting on May twenty-sixth, and I think almost all, all board members were present, either virtually or in person. Um, we talked about the trip to Peru, we talked about the Spire Test, and the Schedule Exploration Committee. Uh, before we get to voting on the trip to Peru, is there anything you wanna add, Sue, about what's go through, or?
Well, I think, yeah, I think you hit, because so many, so many of the board members were there, you've heard a lot of, of, of the information, uh, in, in regard to the trip. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, though. Thank you, highlights.
So, then we could just talk about the, uh, discussion and action to approve the Spanish language department's new trip to Peru.
So, move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor of moving the Spanish language department's student trip to Peru, say aye. Please. The Spanish language department's who drew curious? Spanish language department's who drew curious, thank you very much.
And our next meeting is set for August eleventh and hopefully we'll have that student that we spoke about who studied the block and has come here. Okay, good. And what about the slayer?
Slinger was available.
Okay, for our next curriculum meeting, we'll have those two people present to talk about it. So plan on attending. Yes.
Thanks, Eve. On next up, finance and legislation, Chairperson Hunter.
We have nothing special right now and no need right now. Jeff, any comment on that?
I'll just answer Chris's question. I was able to answer. So if you look in the document, the hundred and eleven thousand, it's check number four two two. If you go down to page twenty, there's check number four two two and the whole list of all the items that make that a thousand. And then if you go to page twenty-six, so twenty to twenty-six is the list of what's on check four two two. And then the sixty-two thousand, check number five two two starts on page point six and goes to page thirty-one. It's all listed. So it's all listed out. It's just, thank you. The loan. It throws it into a liability account and then it gets expensive. Thanks a lot. Craig, when you anticipate us meeting, have a meeting.
As we approach the August meeting for the general public, we'll have one certainly then. As as Jeff, can we work together to determine what the next meeting is? Yeah.
I'd like to propose we I can recommend like a generous speaking points, so based off of meeting this afternoon. I think internally we should follow our planning as to what our course of action would result in that. I think that's good insights there, but I don't think we got what I was hoping we would get, so we should be ready to react. So I think we should have a couple of planning schedules to talk through what our next steps would be, just so that we're not on our heels waiting.
Yeah, we can't react. That'd be correct.
I agree. I don't know if everyone was, equally maybe as surprised with the response we got from the legislators, albeit it's nice to have them here. But I agree, we know where we're at. So to be able to plan, I think we start the discussion now.
I was not aware of what happened earlier today. So if we need to meet earlier or more frequently, that's that's certainly a point.
In essence, and in that shell, it was a it was a meeting to discuss funding and potential revaluation of the nineteen ninety-three funding equation. And the response back in general, we should not anticipate that that will be revisited. And that in general, I hope I'm summing this up accurately, but there would be probably northern means of funding that we would anticipate outside of making things happen on our own. The issue of the referendums was brought up more than once, a lot of discussion on that. But in general, Senator Catherine, who just laid our budget back on us. So given that and knowing that now, I think to Tim's point, to be able to start that discussion now and how we're going to plan accordingly for that fiscal cliff that we're looking at with twenty-four.
And so in my mind, there's two subjects that you're, they just want to make sure I've got a clearer idea what happened this afternoon. My calendar's in the low for kind of rep modification that we'll attend. Unsurprisingly, we're not going to alter the revenue cap formula. So year to year, we continue to struggle with the restrictions that we've had for many years now. I think I heard you talk about the revenue or the fiscal cliff that's coming up after this year. And so were they aware that that is in existence, that it's broad-based? And was there any discussion about what the state's piece of funding related to that fiscal, but you know, did they seem to grasp the issue?
I think they fully grasped the issue, right?
I think they know where it, but they didn't, there was no commitment to, oh, we we realize and we're going to help. Jeff, I thought, did an excellent job impressing upon them just two hundred dollars per student. We won't do it because there was zero this year, there's zero next year. That's two hundred plus two hundred. Then following year, another two hundred. It would need to be at least six hundred to fill pools. So I think if they weren't aware, Jeff did a really good job laying that out there. But they, I feel like they were purposefully silent on that.
But and as much as I love our elected representatives, present company included, you know, oftentimes they've got other priorities. And so getting their ear for, you know, an hour or two this afternoon and being able to put an expert in the field educator himself in front of them so that they are at least aware of this when they sit down with their colleagues in the coming months was, I think, it's spectacular, kind of step forward for us as an organization that maybe benefits broader states. Thanks for setting it up, Jeff. Thanks for putting it in the book.
Important for them to know that even a six hundred doesn't touch CPI. I was using two hundred as an easy number for example purposes, but, you know, six hundred would still be a minimum required. I mean, if you look at what CPI increases were when they stopped going with CPI, that year when it stopped, the limit, revenue limits stopped increasing with CPI, we were expecting two hundred eighty-four dollar increase per student. And that's the year we gradually backed to two hundred, two hundred again, and that take away five sixty. And then the seventy-five, the fifty, the minimal increases, then four years of zeros and then a hundred seventy-seven, hundred seventy-nine and two more years of zeros. I mean, you look at that document, it's in your, it's in your folder. Those are the increased revenue limits that was supposed to be in place for two years, maybe five at the outside, and we're at year thirty. There's, I also did press on to discuss the idea of if there's, if there would be a realistic opportunity for this to change if the CEO in Madison changed in November. And they said, absolutely, it's not going to change now. And yes, that that that's a possibility. But obviously with the person that we have in the, you know, in charge in Madison and of our state, it's, nothing, nothing will change.
The CEO?
Yeah.
And the governor?
Yep, the governor.
Phil also pointed out that in general, given that our request would go towards tax hikes, that in general, none of the legislators, legislators want to be on record to request entire taxes from their constituents, whether it's for roads or buildings or schools. And so in general, it was the highly favorable thing to the education.
They also would not support any sort of referendum. They wouldn't back any referendum. They wouldn't back any referendum outside of--
Within, you know, within their history. The narrative did flip to back on us to market and tell our story, tell our story better that we provide as a really high-quality, great product. And when the time comes, if taxpayers need to be better aware of what they're getting for what little money we have and why need for extra money, we need to make a story.
Is there any discussion about the budget surplus that currently exists? And as I understand, there's a significant budget surplus.
There wasn't. I think there's really only one person. Who was the person that-- No, I don't think there was any. We talked--
No, I'm just talking about a general budget surplus in the state of Wisconsin. It's in excess of a billion dollars, maybe more. And-- Yeah.
It's not Craig Thompson kind of money, but still.
Might help some.
They really said the same things that they say, well, whenever I talk to them, which is, you know, if the revenue limits aren't enough, go to communities and ask for a referendum. That's why I wanted them to see our referendum results. Twenty-three thousand votes, we've won by sixty-nine for a flat, no increase, you know, and actually it turned out to be a decrease in tax rate. So they'll say, go to referendum. We know how difficult that is in our community, but maybe we just have to do a better market. You know, and then maybe get that through, but a lot of, a lot been done. The other thing they'll say, use the ester money to balance your budget for this year and for next year. And then the cliff will come. They didn't say what they're going to do about the cliff. And I told them what they need to do, minimum, and that they'll do it. And then I'm going to talk about a surplus because they don't want to show their hand what they might do when the cliff comes. In terms of ester money, I showed them what we get. And then I provided just two pages of the four hundred districts across the state, so they could just see where we stack up compared to the rest, just a small set that they have access to all their information to. And they're pretty aware of everything that you were sharing with regards to that, which was interesting.
Where the ester money went to, you're talking about--
Where we rank with regards to what--
They got a purposeful basis that we are--
They know we're bottom one, shut down. Yep, bottom three. One of the bottom three is going to move up because they pass a recurring referendum, which is, you know, you have a recurring referendum, it stays in your base each year. Our referendum is a non-recurring. The one point seven million that goes into our our revenue number comes right back out at the end of the year. And then the new money goes back in into the new year for five years. And then it's over. But it's not like it stacks on top of each other. Which is like our Neberen district, they were able to pass a recurring referendum with a half million stacking on top of two and a half million, another one and a half million until they reach seven million and it stays there forever. Our is coming up. Once we, we get eight and a half million total, that doesn't stack, it stops. So that's, that's a big difference. And that's our competition right next door to our, so. So we got a good thing going, right? Right after forty-nine million about facility improvement. For facility improvements. I look at their libraries compared to our libraries. Very different.
I don't, and we'll still watch.
So I mean, they, they know that you can't do the facility improvements or even provide what they're providing in terms of education, they're going to use some of this extra money for facility improvements now. It's just known that revenue limits alone will not fund schools properly. That's why our rooftop units are twenty-five and thirty years old. Our roofs are climbing right to the age where they need to be replaced. The infrastructure is, is not being paid in fair because of the chances of it to share front of it that we so.
Or we can go in class sizes of forty-two like we've heard about.
Yeah.
To be able to put it into facilities, we're taking it out of classrooms.
That might present a role for general. And I don't try to be complaining about this. It is what it is. We'll work with it. But I think we've got to make sure our community knows what we're working with. And that if we can't sustain the Arrowhead reputation when the buildings are starting to crumble. And then they're, they're not there, but they're darn close.
So that's Tim's point. We do need to make sure. Okay, next up is Chairperson Baker with Publics and Grounds.
Yes, we met on June the first. Couple topics that came about was we had the activities director Ryan Bacon talk about some initiatives that would be a hundred percent fundraised with the tennis courts improvement and also adding cages, possible redo with infield instead. So again, he just brought it to our attention as an FYI, that he's just trying to get a pulse out there of if it could be fundraised or not. The second thing was Jeff talked about the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three plan for buildings and grounds. Just gave a summary of what we spent in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one and what's on tap for twenty twenty-two. I also shared a dashboard, executive summary with the board, see if it was something that they would like to have on a quarterly basis, which everyone agreed. And it'll be highlighting four things. The budget for building to grounds, our performance where we're at on a quarterly basis, how we're doing on the referendum spend, showing what we completed, what things are on tap. Also about the sale of the builder farm where we received just under one point two, or I'm sorry, two point one dollars. Just kind of showing us the timeline where we're dedicating those funds towards special education. And then fourthly, looking at unfunded projects. So things that we've had in our past referendums that, you know, it's not going to be covered by the, by the current referendum that was awarded to us, but just showed a pool need. Some other things are not going away. So the rough run, I think it'll be a very useful tool for us as we are on many board meetings, committee meetings, just to give that, you know, snapshot of the buildings crowds and see where we're at. The next meeting is scheduled for, usually it's Wednesdays, but this time we're going to go third, the first Thursday in August, which is August the fourth. So.
Thanks, Tim. Okay, next up is Chairperson Lang with Personnel.
May thirteenth was a meeting for the exclusive purpose of selecting board winners for staff and community members, those selected or not listed because they haven't been told that they're receiving it yet. We don't want this meeting to wreck this project. For those of you that were there, thank you for coming in and dedicating your time. I'm sorry, I couldn't either. May twenty-fifth, we met to do a comprehensive review of the employee handbook. I have to say that I think far and away is the greatest number of changes and most engaged or participation that I've seen in that annual review. Is one of those meetings that could easily be a yawn and people did not treat it that way. And so we, I think, had some productive discussions. Jeff went through the lengthy list of updates and revisions primarily as recommended by legal counsel or to correct some statements. There are a few things that since the time of our meeting have been further revised. And so you'll see that list of revisions on the final attachment accompanying this agenda. I know Jeff is fast and succinct and yet it will take some time to run through all of these modifications. I know most of us were there for that personnel meeting. Would you like for him to review those changes or people come forward? Synopsis that's been provided.
I just have one question of, I know we're building the policy for the five oh fours, but just kind of stating in the playbook of referencing that policy, will that be, I was just looking at your bulletin list. I didn't see it there. If I just--
It's number four, part one, section three point zero one. Revision to eighty-eight, eighty.
Okay, thank you.
Seven and say eighty-eight.
Oh, it is eighty, no revision to add staff. Okay, with IEPs and five oh four plus. So if you go to that section, it's, I put some verbiage around it. I can get there. I'll just read it.
And we do have a policy drafted for that. So when we get to policy committee, whether, whether the board or the committee feels like it should be addressed separately sooner. Or once we get to the, I think it's six hundred series, if I remember correctly, policy, once we get to that, we'll have the draft policy there.
So I just added in to the end of that, or to the end of first paragraph, the three oh one district expectations. In fact, we have staff members required to apply with the section five oh four policy and IDEA. In order to ensure that students with disabilities receive free appropriate education. You can plan with me at the portal IEPs or section five oh four, we have that service points. If you're a word policy or the director of student services for assistance. Thank you. Now the other one. I'll land in red. Was a piece that we didn't get to talk about. I talked with Tim afterwards, and I think I talked with a few others afterwards. It was just something that was missed from two years ago. Was supposed to get put into the handbook on the early resignation notice language. A little bit of a payout related to that, so we can get earlier notice, so we can post position. So it was just not, it was accidentally neglected from getting it to the handbook. So we got to do this here. Almost got it missed again. Thanks, Duro, we caught it. Other than that, everything was pretty much discussed at the meeting.
And so I think we need a motion to adopt the employee handbook provisions on this present.
So. Any further discussion? Otherwise, on favor, say aye.
I will report out that the next meeting of Personnel Committee is, has three items that are already on the agenda. I'm hoping that those are going to be the only three items. We will be taking up an issue that Brandon and Ray raised early on about the use of consultants in the Arrowhead District. And so Laura has agreed to work with Jeff to compile our budget for consultants and our history. So that we've got some sense of whether we're spending money there or not. I've told that that's going to be refreshingly brief and unsubstantial. But I thought it was a great idea to just kind of dig into that and make sure that if we're spending money on those things. That we're, we're sort of as a category of what those costs are. So. That report should be somewhat useful. Also have Bob Butler on the line where we've considered a change to hand, employee handbook that would have a grievance process for the superintendent. The language that was proposed was consistent with what the Wasby staff had seen in the in other schools around the state. A couple of us were not comfortable with the brevity of the language. Because if a superintendent is filing a grievance, it's probably a signal that there's something serious at foot. And so we had talked about the idea of having Bob Butler help us craft a policy that would give the president at that moment in time greater guidance. And at least a suggestion of bringing in some outside party to handle the grievance process. So that we don't put ourselves in a position where our president or other board members are being disqualified. Sitting in a appeal that might ultimately result from a grievance. And there is no particular issue that is on the table that is, I expect to be grieved. And which is exactly the time you should deal with it. And then we had a third item and now I'm blank.
If I recall correctly, we were going to bring back some data Chris had asked for about comparisons of six days. And bringing back what some had already seen, some salary schedule comparisons with. Thirteen pages Jeff can run through again.
Yeah, so, so my goal when I took on the chairmanship of the Personnel Committee was to do a year-long review of personnel and just kind of pick a handful of topics every time we had an open agenda. There aren't that many open agendas these days. But one of the first things that happened was that Jeff had given us a comparative analysis of our compensation schedule relative to other schools. And it was great information. And I feel like with new board members and the sophistication of that compensation format would be useful to have that repeat. And so it was a good presentation the first time. And anybody who has to work their way through the step and lane system. I guarantee it took me a few years to get to a point where I started getting how it came together. So repeating the couple of things. Hopefully. We'll keep that. Please go.
So we have, we have approved twenty-two, twenty-three employee handbook. And then moving into policy.
Thank you, Madam President. So we've been busy, as you can see, in policy. Our meeting from May nineteen. I think everybody or almost everybody was there, either virtually or actual. It basically all centered around our activities. Director Ryan basically talked about his proposed changes to the co-curricular code of conduct handbook. He had some changes that included basically mentoring students at an earlier time. So that if there is a problem with grades, they can react to it quicker. We also talked about third offense violations with a permanent suspension. And then we talked further about the appeal process and basically not having the board as another appeal venue and rather having it go to our superintendent to make sure that all, all the processes within the appeal were appropriate. And as long as they are, she is going to relay that information to us on the rare occasions that this happens in the next, in the next meeting that we would have as a board, as a full board. There were a lot of things that were pushed off. We continue to go through the handbook. Future agenda item, the suggestion was made for a quiz of employees that received the employee handbook. I don't know where we landed on that, except for that it's a future agenda item. And then we had another meeting on June second. And let me go to that one. So the June second meeting, once again, very, almost completely attended. Start off with Mr. Veniker talking about the idea of a board sponsored recognition program for a non-teaching staff member. Everybody feels that this is a great idea. So we have an action item coming up shortly to discuss with regards to that. Basically talks about somebody that also Laura brought up a good point that the, the employee should be within good standing for three years prior. And, and we all agree that that was a good idea. And then Mr. Linger presented additional language for policy one thirty-one, which talked about board officer in the event of a vacancy. So to try to call any issues that we've had this past year to, to keep that from happening again in the future. So we discussed that, and I believe we have updated language on that as well tonight. So we'll be talking about that in a moment. Also, seven, policy seven thirteen was discussed with a new phrase, let's see, a new phrase. That procedures shall be established by the superintendent with the approval of the school board. So that even though policy seven thirteen is a ways down the line, we wanted to make that change. So that change is also going to be voted on shortly. I requested that the verbiage. See if you posted on any vacant position for procedure one thirteen will be updated. And that, that has to do with everything that you were talking about, right? Tim, it's still here. Excluding, oh yes, I'm sorry, excluding the day of the week. Just to, just to avoid that issue again. So the day of the week will be excluded. Let's see. Superintendent shall inform the policy committee of any and all material changes to certain procedures. This change was brought, will be brought into the June eighth school board meeting for action and discussion. So we're going to talk about that shortly. We're going to just continue on. And for our next meeting, which I believe is June twenty-second or twenty-seventh, I'm sorry. Because we have a long ways to go. So we'll probably be chipping away at that, starting on that day again. Having said that, we have a discussion and action item to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three parent athlete co-curricular code of conduct handbook. Is there any questions with regards to that handbook prior to asking for that? There was one thing actually that I was in conversation with our superintendent and our athletic director. That is added, and I don't, he said that he had added it in the email. In that co-curricular code of conduct, but I didn't see, is it attached in there? I didn't.
Age eighteen, letter C, it's highlighted in orange.
Okay, let me just go back.
And so, Chris, you have brought up in the meeting something to give coaches more tea. And by practice, coaches currently, they have control over their team. And if someone behaves, if a, if an athlete is bullying or has poor sportsmanship. They have the authority to say, you're sitting on the bench. But we don't have that in writing. So Chris had a great idea of putting it right in here. So it makes it very clear for coaches, but also for athletes and families as they need this. So you can see the wording there. And we just, we also wanted to make sure that it didn't supersede the code of conduct. So I think the original language that was proposed or discussed was the coach has the authority for any. Like I said, the coach's discretion for any type of penalty or disciplinary action. But we don't want a coach to be able to say, first time you've misbehaved, Mr. Ferris, you're off the team. Because that goes against the progressive step of first offense, second offense, third offense. So I would ask that the board review that language and does that, does that match?
The language looks good, although I can't imagine how you can write a clause about coaches disciplinary authority without using the word lapse. None of us are happy with that.
Yeah, the impotence for this, for this addition was a coach for one of my daughters last year. He was a great coach. But there are, there were a couple of situations where, you know, I think she would have felt more empowered if there was something that she could go back to to say, well, hey, this is, this is in the, you know, the code of conduct that you have assigned. So it just gives, gives a coach, even though, as Laura mentioned, they have the ability as a coach to, to make those decisions. This way it's kind of more spelled out so that as parents and other, you know, people that might not agree with the decisions that are made, they can refer back to that specific policy. So having said that, any, any questions or any further discussion on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three parent athlete co-curricular code of conduct handbook?
Did we want to put anything in there around keeping a tally or a list of code violations and what the punishment or what the outcome of it was afterwards as like a best practice? Or would that go into the handbook?
I, I just, I, I wonder if that should be the purview of the, of the coach. And as long as they're following the, the code of conduct that already is in place. And it's not, like you said, superseding that.
This would be if they end up having to file a grievance or a complaint and it goes to the jury. And then the jury decides that this is going to be, yes, they're in violation, this is the outcome of it.
We can take that, we can take that discussion back to, to policy to to, to talk about as a future agenda item. It sounds good.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Well, that would be within.
It might be more of a policy and not in the handbook.
I think that that's.
So as is right now, if there were any further discussion around the twenty-two, twenty-three parent athlete. Any recommendations to approve it as written? Further discussion, on favor, say aye. Thank you very much.
Great, then we're moving to discussion and action to approve changes to procedure one sixty-one, which is a board sponsored recognition program.
Any further discussion? If I would just chime in, please know that the, that new award that the board is adopting tonight, it's the Arrowhead Support Staff Stars of the Year Award. You'll see there isn't criteria listed yet, that's because I have it timed. But I promise it will be done this summer and put in there, I'll be using the other, the other current policy for criteria. But there's really no reason that we can't take it as is right now and add correct verbiage later. I think the, the goal was to be able to adopt or to approve. Yes, we're doing that. So then at tomorrow's end of year luncheon for staff, that can be announced. Guess what, next year. So any recommendations to approve policy one sixty-one board sponsored recognition program? Policy one sixty-one board sponsored recognition program, curious.
Okay, great. The next piece, discussion and action to approve policy one thirty-one board officers. And maybe Tim can share your thoughts here.
So the attachment to that point is the language that was presented at the policy meeting. I've having Chris giving me, having Chris, having had Chris offer some succinct thoughts on the readability of the clause, I went back at this and worked on it for a while earlier today. What you see in front of you is hopefully something that is a little easier to follow. A little longer, which is how Laura solves readability issues. So if you want to take a minute, look at that, that replaces just the two paragraphs that were added to the introduction of section one thirty-one. There was a modification to section one thirty-one that isn't involved in this and. There was a modification to section one thirty one that isn't involved in this and. Nobody had an objection to it, which is why probably. Didn't get mentioned here, but it said that the vice president has the ability to step in for any officer that is unavailable rather than just the president. But that the vice president cannot substitute for two officers simultaneously. Makes it easy for us if we was a secretary or treasurer or something that we have somebody that can perform that function until we come to a.
Mr. Langer, do you have an extra copy of that for school?
There should be an extra one.
There's other questions. So if the, in this case, if the president were to resign or leave. We would have to fill that board before re-electing. The next.
Or to act, we would have to have nine seated board.
And the vice president in that case has the ability to break the tie.
Yeah, so we didn't, we didn't modify that.
Policy, but that is. That is how it works.
Right, and I, and I believe that there, I, I use the word we way more broadly than I intend. I didn't address that issue. I think there was some agreement that. There was a slight edit to that portion of the policy. I just don't have the modified policy. I'm not even sure it's, we just got to changing a word from May to show or something.
We did discuss that.
So that not, is that not an agenda item?
I think we just don't have that listed. Right, because we did. Change that it was, it's currently shall, the president shall. And Tim Langer brought up, depending on the circumstances, do we want to force the president to do that? Or it could be may. That will protect for any unforeseen circumstances.
So, but we are not taking action. Well, that's actually this, should be this discussion, right? Correct? I think that's a just policy.
Yeah, it is policy one thirty one. So. That might be. Because the. So the change. The change isn't actually in policy, it's in procedure. And as we had talked about, the procedures don't typically come to the board for approval. Unless it's a brand new procedure or it's a. Significant change. So. Again, this case, we're following that process. You've talked about the changes and like the shall turns into may. And so that's already been done. If you go to our website and look at the procedures for power, policy one thirty one procedures. That's, that's been completed. And then the changes that are linked that Tim had provided would be additional. Policy language change.
So if. Anybody has a question or comment on the edited language regarding the replacement of the officers midterm? We can address it, otherwise I'm prepared to make a move.
I guess I'm also sorry for my confusion. Maybe it's because it's. I guess I'm just wondering if, if that language should be included here or if I'm. Where the, the board president. Either shall or, you know, I, I can't remember how we had crafted it before where we were talking in, in our policy meeting where we had discussed the idea of. Changing it to May. Correct?
Right, that's in procedure.
And that's in procedure. So.
So if you.
That hasn't been, that's not.
It's already been changed.
That's already been changed.
Procedures don't come. To the board.
Okay, okay. Okay, I'm on page six of the procedure and it still says shall.
Oh, it's not, we just haven't got.
So I think we should take that back to committee and just discuss it again to make sure everybody's on, on par with the procedure piece, but for policy.
I'm on board with that.
Okay.
I'd like to give this a little more thought as well.
Okay. Okay.
Good. Sorry, saying both the policy and the procedure you'd like to take back.
I think both.
Okay. So. So do we need a motion to send that back?
We need a motion to table it. Actually, you know what, I'm. I'm just remembering it incorrectly. That part about the president shall to May, that was actually in the procedure for, it's not one thirty one. That is for the vacancy. For vacancies. So filling board vacancies is policy one thirteen. Procedure one thirteen. So in. Number five, it's a longer paragraph in procedure one thirteen. If no candidate receives a forum or a majority vote on the third ballot, and if a forum majority of the seated board agrees it. The board president may determine which candidate wins the tie. If no forum or majority is reached, the notice and application process shall be re-initiated to appoint a board number to the vacant seats. So that's why it was, Christine, it was a whole different procedure where that language was. Was found and we made that, you know, as, as we reached consensus in committee, we changed it in procedure.
Okay, so that's procedure one thirteen. So, so I, I guess I'd like to make a motion to, to review, review that. In policy, just to make sure that that's okay. And then you're saying that you would like to table this as well, to, to bring this back. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to, as far as the actual agenda, to table this, to bring it back to, to policy.
So just so I'm clearly bringing back policy one thirty one.
Even though one thirteen, as I've mentioned here.
And then procedure one thirteen. Thank you. The motion's made to table policy one thirteen and one sixty one and.
One thirty one. One thirty one.
And returning to policy. All in favor, say aye.
And then policy seven thirteen, very simple. Adding the language with the approval of the school board. Once again, this policy is, is our. Seven thirteen, the seven hundreds will be dove into deeper, but this is just for policy seven thirteen right now. Any discussion on this?
What's it to approve? I'll second. All in favor, say aye. During policy seven thirteen step.
And then policy one twenty one, also fairly simple. The superintendent shall inform the policy committee of any and all material changes to said procedures. Just the, putting yellow in policy one twenty one, any discussion? A second.
All in favor? Next meeting date?
Yeah, next meeting date, I think, is the twenty seventh.
Okay, next up on the agendas, other reports. Wasbe? I don't know, Laurie, you wanted to add anything relative to Wasbe or? I don't. However, we'll move right along to CISA one and hopefully get an update from, from Tim, which ended the meeting.
I did. The, the meeting was very short. I thought it was going to be long. The agenda said it was going to be long and might, might be very, very brief. Really around getting the different. Districts within CISA one together to elect a representative from that district. To then go into a separate meeting to then vote on, on things relative to what they're going to do then for the next upcoming year. I was not the voting member. Luckily we did have someone in our Arrowhead community that was. So we represented there. With other things that I kind of learned there. I can see the benefit of CISA for. The schools that really need a diverse and very, what I would call. Special needs scenarios where the, the students may not get the right level of curriculum or care or need in their school. But just losing everything that you do here at Arrowhead, I think those, those opportunities are well addressed here for our students. But they do take care of the students or the schools that may not be. As well suited as we are. There's still a lot of things that I want to investigate into CISA, though. Just as a, a source of where state and or federal money goes that I think could be limiting. Our ability to get state or federal money because it goes to CISA instead of to other schools. So I think for what we're using CISA for now. And the money we pay for, and it's coming up in a future agenda item too, I think I approved that contract. I think that's, that's still probably well suited for our needs. I, I don't think we pull on CISA very much based off of, based off of.
Yeah, we get some cost savings too, because like we have, by law, we have to have a reading specialist like on staff and to pay our own would not be a good. Sort of use of fun. So. We pay them to borrow a reading specialist and like she was outside today, working with some of our staff. So we can be cost minimal, comply with the law and then get a, get a good service.
Yeah, so.
That's where it comes into play like you.
Yeah, like where, where we use it, I, I think it's, we're well served there. But more to investigate, it's an area that I haven't. Yep, so more to work with.
If I could just jump in and clarify, we have had students attend. The CISA alternative school program, the project success program, success. And they have two different. Two different type of programs. And when we have a student, it typically happens at least once a school year. In a population of twenty one hundred students, it's a small amount, but where a student cannot be educated here. Maybe it's their behavior or it's since they have to be educated off campus. We may look and add and speak to this more. There's many alternative school sites. And they have different areas of expertise and some students match one program versus another. We've used the CISA program, that one tends to be cheaper.
Yeah. Transportation cost a lot cheaper than the tuition cost of a lot cheaper too.
So there are times we'll pull for, for that where we're paying more to CISA, but that's a fifty thousand dollar charge for a student. That might be saving us from a thirty four thousand dollar program somewhere else. But I would also just add, as I'm saying this, we're not looking for the cheapest program for what works for kids. If one of those other, if CISA does not work, well, we need to educate the child the best way. And so it might be a more expensive program. But I just wanted to be clear, as you're approving a. A CISA contract, it tells our basic membership and a few little things that we do, but periodically we are owing for more. Apprehensive service.
And during the session, I was going to showcase a, a nice video of a story of one, one student that went through. At a program where the students worked through and went and walked through.
I was just going to ask, that's the obligation.
Yeah, that was, that was really cool. And I think made a big difference in that, in that student.
Just for clarification, are you a permanent CISA delegation?
I, I really don't know what the obligation is, like when, when the next time we would go. But I, I'd be happy with it. Having some consistency there may be advantageous for, for us, so if it can work with my work schedule.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that. And, and just so everybody knows, I, I believe Troy Anderson was appointed through Merton as the controller of CISA one. He had suggested that if there are any district operational things, we can channel things through him as well.
I wasn't going to call him out, but he is the one that we elected in there.
Excellent. Super. Thank, thank you for that, Tim. Um, new business, employee transactions, reservations, retirements. Shall I read through this list?
We can just make a motion.
Okay, do we, can I have a, a motion to, I'll make a motion. All in favor? Oh, of course, I'm sorry. Is there any concern about the special ed area? Because I see, you know, there's special ed aid, special ed staff, and I do notice there's two new hires for special ed. But Heidi Hamilton is also leaving and she's not on here.
She was probably on a previous.
She was.
Yeah.
Yeah, last year. Yeah, I know, but I know she's one of the ones that's leaving. So I'm just saying that there seems to be a lot leaving from that area. Is there any concern?
No, um, there is a mutual parting of ways. That I think will, both parties will be beneficial with, with one. The retirement of Ilinda Lowbeck, if anyone's ever had the pleasure of meeting Ilinda Lowbeck, she is absolutely one of the people that has made this place. Ron, just an incredible individual. I've had the same conversation with her for seven years where she's considered retirement, not ready, considered retirement, not ready. And what she said to me. Last week was, I asked myself, am I going to be doing this till a hundred? And I'm like, great, she's going to do it till she's a hundred. And she told me that it, that it would be the last year. And then our other aide just let me know that. Both are grandparents and when people become grandparents, that's when they start to have, see the end of the line. But. When the paykill really helped us through the pandemic quite a lot, and she said that definitely had. Ground her down, you know, quite a bit, that she was looking forward to having something that was a little bit less taxing.
I see there's two new hires of special ed. Is one of them like replacing the teacher there or is coming else?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, one replaced Heidi retiring and then the other will replace your.
I brought that up, Kim. Great that we had this conversation, but it was primarily so that I could recognize what Pat has just said. I am one who has had the privilege of knowing Ilinda Lowbeck a little bit. And she is an outstanding individual and I would just say that this school will underserved. And. Understandably has to retire at some point. Some folks I wish they'd delay it longer, although you're telling me it's been seven years.
I had the same conversation when she said a hundred. I was really excited.
And Lee was the one that was in that.
And Lee is the one who is in that daughter, especially.
No.
At least most often in the coffee shop up at our campus. So heavy in the school to work kind of skills.
Anything that can be shared about Cindy? The custodian that's turned.
I don't know. The agent. Okay. Any further discussion?
Just to add that for Iliana, accept her retirement with regrets.
Okay. Oh, in favor of approving the resignation of retirement? List, list carries and then contracts, letters of appointment. I make the motion to accept the contracts and letters of appointment. Any further discussion?
Just, just on special ed, what more can you say about your background?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
How was that gonna?
It's gonna be awesome. So we hired or we interviewed as part of Heidi's retirements, we had that heads up first. We went through a round of interviews for new board members. Typically, the way that I like to do interviews, run through weekend applications, pull our top few, and then it's individual for the department. We'll look at, you know, can they, can they do the role? We'll ask them certain questions. I can talk a little bit about it last time as well. And then the next time they come back for interviews, we would say our top candidates, hopefully the only two top candidates will teach a lesson in front of our students. Alternative ed students are the best erometer for how well a person can connect with students. They never steer me wrong. They're a hundred percent accurate all the time. And then Adam, Sue, and Laura have a crack at them as well, too. Tom Remiglio comes to us from Franklin. Tom, in around my age area, I would say, he has spent the last year or two. He is. Spent the last couple of years of the department, the Special Education Department head at Franklin. Has a lot of leadership qualities to him. When I did background checks, that kind of showed through me. Also, I had a couple of contacts over there say that they've really enjoyed working with him. He lives out in Dallas and has young kids that's looking to make a permanent change in a permanent home here. Able to easily answer questions, connected really well with our alternative education students. Will actually be itself removing, we're moving one of our other special education teachers up to actually take Heidi's role, and then he'll be itself campus taking that role. Within that, our second top candidate was Matthew Gosman, who let know when we said that Tom was gonna get the job, that we would be interested on down the line. And we kept those calls warm enough that when Jerden has the resignation, I gave him a phone call. And I think that we were all pleasantly surprised that he was still available to us. Matthew comes to us from River Valley, so about a half hour to hour west of Madison. He's gonna be in his third year teaching, but definitely has the chops to do the job and do the job well. You could sign in an interview when you break the interviewers out of interview mode, and you just start talking shop. You had some really pointed questions about the way we do things here. Got into some minutia, some special ed, was thoughtful in the way he asked questions and the way that we responded and making sure that we are philosophically aligned to it as well, and he'll be. Very excited about our, our, our people coming up.
Relocating them, being a far.
A hundred percent, yes. He is looking for apartments on the fifteenth, so he's gonna be. Yeah, but yeah, they'll be out here, so some good hires, local hires.
May I have a motion to approve contracts? Did already, we did that? Okay. Just to vote? All in, all in favor? Thank you very much. Good. Discussion and action to donations. There's anything there? Discussion and action on the twenty-two, twenty-three district calendar correction. So first, I have a question. Do any of you have a birthday on November thirtieth? It's too bad, because you wouldn't have had an age. The template that I used did not, November thirtieth was left off. And this came, our administrative team reviewed it. All seven K eight district superintendents reviewed it. We put it out to staff, they reviewed it. We brought it to the board, you reviewed it. We put it out to families, they reviewed it. That was all back in October, November. Just a couple of weeks ago, a teacher said, hey, Laura. So what that means is in order to continue to be compliant with, of course, DPIs required number of hours, but also our teacher contracted days, we can't just add an extra workday. So while we add in November thirtieth, Wednesday, November thirtieth, we now need to remove a school day. It's sort of a good problem to have. Administratively, what we're recommending on the calendar in here, we've already dropped it in as for you to be able to see what that would look like. We're recommending May twenty-sixth. I explained this in your board brief, but I'll just touch on it again. Some of the benefits of having May twenty-sixth, one of families, one for a holiday weekends. But perhaps more importantly for learning, it's at the end of the year, it's after AP tests. So it's not, it's not that crunch time before APs. It also allows for us to have a second easy snow day makeup. So April, the Monday after Easter, the tenth, is a first snow day makeup. And then May twenty-sixth could be a second snow day makeup. That prevents us from having the change exam times or other things that are more disruptive to learn. So we would recommend that, but some other reasonable or doable alternatives would be shortening the school year by one day. So instead of ending on June ninth, we could end on June eighth and just move the exams a day earlier. In general, our teacher, well, I mean, who doesn't like to end the school year earlier? But the problem with that is it's always crunch time before exams. And so that, thinking about what that was like this year, that might not be the best, but it's doable. The other option could be Monday, January second. So extending winter break onto the second. The benefit of that is because the legal holiday is on the first, some of our families may have a work on Monday, the second. So then I looked up every one of our K eight districts calendars for next year. Because if they all had that day off, I'd probably be coming to you saying, I would propose that date. They do not. Our eight districts are exactly split in half. Four districts have that day off of school, and four of us have that day as a school day. And it's not unusual for us to have that day as a school day. Holiday fell on me. So it's up, the board approves our district calendar, so it's your choice where you want to pull that date from administratively. That's, that would be our recommendation is May twenty-sixth.
So is that the date when there may be also less conflict or discrepancy with the K eights? I mean, how will this affect?
I should have looked up which districts have that day off. I know some do. It might be more, more than half, but I have to look that up. The other thing I forgot to say is that is one of our heaviest days of staff absenteeism. Fridays in May, heavy absenteeism. People use up, I use my personal day all year. And that's one of the heaviest to turn in reporting. So there's also the mentality of like, if they can't beat them, join them. Because when we've got nineteen positions unfilled by substitutes on that day, that means everyone else is working harder, and some of the classes end up more like babysitting than instruction, because there's no substitute. So just another reason why the twenty-sixth may be.
So I'm a fan of making sure that we've got a couple of stories in the calendar. I appreciate that being accomplished, so this stands to November thirtieth arriving back on our calendar. I move that we the calendars.
I move that, that next year that we take the thirtieth off again.
Well, all in favor of the calendar change? A host? Motion carries will be. The discussion and action on the twenty-two, twenty-three CISA one service contract.
Move that we accept the contract as stated here.
Any further discussion?
I'm just curious about your thoughts, Tim, with regards to when you're talking about bigger picture and savings on on this with regards to your visit, what, what you're, like where your head is on all that?
Yes, I think for this and what, what we are getting with this contract, I think it makes sense for and at the same time, continue in the discovery, know that it's the fourth in six months.
All in favor of approving this CISA one contract? She carries CISA one contract. Discussion and action on the revised walkshop county area school health insurance purchasing properties I laws.
Does anybody else just love this stuff? You have anything to say, Joe?
It's a standard contract. We approve it every year. We're part of consortium with health insurance. There's some minor, minor tweaks and changes throughout there that are listed on the front page of that. We went through some bigger revisions last year, and so this is really to see.
Seems like health insurance consortium has been a beneficial thing, saving us money and the provision of health insurance benefits for employees. And since I think it's been wonderful, I would move that we adopt the your second.
Any further discussion? We have we have carried on the discussion action on the revised walkshop county area school health insurance purchasing properties I laws. Discussion action on number of committee appointments and timing of committee meetings. It shouldn't take a long time. I just want to thank everyone for graciously stepping up to the plate. All of our committee chairs were doing a fabulous job. And everyone clearly has been placed onto three committees right now. And I have some concerns about that, given the weight of some busy schedules, personal schedule. So I just want to throw it out there that at some point, if board members feel overtaxed with the number of committees that they're on, we can step back to we just make some adjustments. So we're flexible on that, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't overdo it. In addition to that, I just wanted to kind of firm up some schedules moving forward for the various committees to make sure that we can optimize everyone being there. And I know a number of you that the best way for you to be there is to zoom. Everybody's worried with that. So for the summer months, given that this, the schedule, the schedule we currently have, are they working for the majority of people? Should we consider any changes?
One thing I would just bring up is, as the chairs of each of the committees, just kind of, the meeting time is fine. It's like, okay, when it hits past eight o'clock, when people are going to other jobs, then, you know, I think that's the challenge, at least for me. And I think if it's like, you know, just kind of looking like plan out the best we can of making the value of everyone's time, you know, try and get that, those things done by eight o'clock or whatever it is.
Yeah, I think in general, I was trying to be very respectful of that. Running a little bit late with this table.
Is that part of the conversation? Tim and I both had a question, and I can bring it over to the administration. We were zooming a couple of, last week, week before. And toward the end of the meeting, we both felt like we got cut out a lot. I don't know if that has to do with the technological issue, maybe can you just?
I was told to ask you, you were on these on the, on your Chromebook or personal devices?
I was on personal device.
I was on Chrome. I was on this one, right?
That was Jeff Waters' question for me, so I will follow up with him on that phone. Now, was it just that one time that you had problems, because then we had other people calling in and it wasn't?
I had, I forget which next meeting it was this week, but it was pretty brief. Continue to cut in and out. I think they cut out once.
No, it was the same meeting that they're talking about. I just didn't raise the issue. I thought it was my wifi, but apparently.
I think it's an ongoing issue. So at some point, so it's both personal devices and jam. I will let Jeff Waters know and see if there's anything.
It was really odd, because the first part of our meeting, I think, was fine. And then towards the last quarter of the meeting, there's more and more cutting out. So there were points where I'd miss ten, twenty seconds or more, where it couldn't follow the gist of the conversation.
Do you hear me when you're on the laptop?
That's a little difficult, too, is, is it's hard to pretend on who's speaking from which angle. That, that can be.
You should make a point to speak louder.
And then also just having some kind of mic, I don't know if that can be brought up with our technology team, too. Just if there's a better mic that, because I think that that's kind of a challenge that I remember, too.
Yeah, yeah, if there's any kind of technical equipment, you could have it real, that might be helpful.
So I was thinking it was more of a bandwidth issue, since it got later into the meeting, there's more people here likely on the on the wifi, on utilizing the bandwidth. Video came back up, like the bandwidth got better again, video came back up, and then it's.
In that particular week, are, you talk about a technology team, well, it's like a typical one. But he was on vacation that week, so we couldn't have just run down to his office and asked what's going on or check something. So he will never be allowed to vacations again.
I do think it was that one meeting, though. I haven't had too many versions.
I haven't, apart from the microphone, it should be straight to here.
Kind of going back to. Kind of going back to your original question, my only real consistent work problem is when face. The battle is going to be very difficult to deal with. We'll try to move on to move international based meetings with other reviews if more don't happen. But generally, any other day of the week, I should be able to make it virtually. We're always trying to assemble person, but.
And I think it's one of those, as we have briefly talked about, the potential to change themselves more dramatically and fall and maybe even combine. Community meetings and holding evenings. Two companies at one time. So, you know, I guess as we close out a summer schedule.
I do like the fact that we've moved in the six forty five, even though I don't like the early, but at least that we can cut off at eight and then people that have to leave at eight can.
There's no real action on this. No, no, I just really wanted to check in more than anything. Serving everyone the best.
Is that six forty five working? Okay, that is six thirty. Is that the first forty five was fine?
For policy, we could use six thirty, but.
Yeah, you can use five.
I'll be dying. Exactly.
Okay, we've already gone through the the local legislators were here today. And then discussion and action on the twenty two twenty three six six point zero three zero one students agreement. Regarding the eighth grade math written. Make the motion to approve that. Isn't that kind of an ongoing thing every year? The way we've done it as a six 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 agreement, we've had a teacher there for a long time. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of approval? I propose. Discussion action on. The services agreement for the eighth grade math. Carrie's, I think, thank you. Future agenda items.
So I'd like to propose as a future agenda item, talking about Mr. Evers' idea with regards for advertising. Arrowhead to the community more with the guy. I mean, I don't know if that means, you know, postcards or, you know, whatever that might, whatever that might look like. But it's something that I'd be nice to have the discussion soon because, you know, we'll be getting into. I don't know when students start looking, I'm guessing now for open enrollment.
Well, also enrollment window is is February to eight.
It is.
Enrollment. That means they live in a different community and they want to come here. Enrollment, ideally, we want people to move here. We get more, you know, more bang for our bucks with resident students and open enrollment. So if it's specific to open enrollment, we do have a list of things we do and we can bring that forward. But in general, we want to always have positive PR for our schools.
Sure.
And so we can talk through, and I'm not sure if policy committee or what committee that would be best placed for that discussion. But we can bring things that we already do and then whatever more we do is advantageous. I feel like with a budget of nearly zero, we'll do a lot. But if more money is put into that, we could do more. I shouldn't say zero, our on point bulletin. Spend a lot of time on that and that's several thousand dollars because it's every.
And that's a, you know, a question of, you know, like the legislators we're talking today, you know, is there some, is there a different way of marketing that piece? Since that goes out to so many people that can help to, you know, drive that idea differently. You know, I know there's a lot of new young professionals on the board, you know, and I don't know if there's just a, you know, any, any. Realizing that our budgets are tight, you know, any, any community members that that we know of that can help in that regards to. Marketing us in a way that might be a little bit more, that might give us a little bit different feedback or a different opportunity to reach.
Well, we are, we are in luck. We've got some great part eight professions right on the board. So, yeah, I think if. Do some brainstorming around this. I guess wherever you think this would be best placed this in a committee, I don't know where it fits most appropriate. Doesn't fit real well anywhere. Yeah, and rather not putting policies on overall. Let's do that.
I know what I think it was last year, maybe do we do that mailer out before the annual meeting every year? When is it slated to go out this?
The first week in August, either last week in July or first week in August to get mail boxes. Because not only is it our annual publication, just to show, you know, Rob Rod, here's all the great things about Arrowhead. But it also is our formal notification to the community of that annual meeting. So we want at least two weeks' notice. So I, now that school is ending, then the last two weeks in June. We put that together. I write articles that need to be written. Our administrative team has already brainstormed our topics. And then we get back to the. He does a lot of the organizing of the. Pamphlet or the bulletin, and then we get that to the printer in early July to make sure it is done. We can look at the proofs, I share with the board, and then it goes to a mail service where it gets every nineteen thousand. So in terms of making major changes to that bulletin this year, I wanted to advise that only because I don't know when we'd be able to do that. It's well underway already.
This is future.
Any other future agenda items?
I was thinking the topic of cell phones, but that might be a little. At this time and place, we have so much else to do. It's just. It's always been kind of in the back of my mind, especially after I met with Sue and Adam, and we talked about that. There's a policy on cell phones that students should have them put away unless they're needed for class. But they have their laptops and other things for class. And I think the cell phones are really a distraction, to be honest. And I'm just wondering if there's something more on our end that we need to look at and make our policy have a bit more teeth. To really. Investigate. And I've heard from teachers, too, that they're very frustrated with cell phones in the classroom and. A big distraction.
Yeah, let's take it to policy. That's awesome.
The kids that use the cell phone on sometimes just get a wifi connection or speeds on your phones. What do you mean? Like sometimes I thought, well, my kids said, well, it's easier for me to access the internet on my phone versus the Chrome.
Well, I think it's kind of sad, though, when you listen to people talk, even when you make presentations and you say, oh, the students had to talk to one another like that's something unusual. Because they're always on their phones, you know, chatting. And it brings back that personal touch that people should communicate more one on one rather than going to their phones and walking down the hall. And they said they're on their cell phones, like nobody's talking to each other, interacting. And I had, you had that good example when we were talking about a teacher that said, okay, you're done with your lessons. Do something for the last minute, but no phones. And they kind of sat there and they didn't know what to do. Like, oh, my goodness, that's so sad.
Yeah, I mean, technology, you know, I've seen teachers do good things. Utilize technology for engagement that occurs, that happens. But the brain of our young people is being shaped differently. By how connected they are, even when the cell phone's not in front of them, they're distracted by what might be on it when they pick it up later.
Yeah, and a lot of that's the bullying and the mental illness and how they don't feel connected to one another.
It's real. It's a, it's a community conversation, quite frankly.
Yeah.
I think because it involves a lot of parental influence, too, in terms of what rules are and, you know, in their households, things like that.
I think you'll hear a lot of the communities in support of the cell phone in class.
And there were those comments already.
It's going to be more of a divisive topic than we might.
Yeah, I agree.
Obviously, at the at the appropriate time, so I was, I was presenting in the shop class at Manali Falls High School about a month ago. In class, it was about forty kids in there because they could combine two classes, the metal side and the wood side to come in and hear. Me and my company speak. Eighty percent of the kids were on their cell phone the entire presentation.
And the teachers didn't do it?
Didn't say a word. So afterwards, I'm not insinuating that, but this is, this is a life lesson. I taught two kids. We were, we were there to promote our. Junior apprentice program and we're actually hiring high school kids for summer work. And two of the kids, not very many were interested, two of the kids, two of the kids that were on their phone came out and said, give me an application. I'm interested. Don't want you. We're on the phone the entire time. You don't use phones in the workplace. You obviously can't sit for thirty minutes to listen to a presentation. Not interested. Two other kids came up who weren't on their phone. They got applications. We're going to hire them. And so they learned a lesson. So if there is an appropriate time, and I think we have to be very specific around when the appropriate times are. And and learning the tough lessons.
So I would say this, I'm totally in agreement with you than my oldest. It was a huge issue. She's a kid who was. You know, an ADHD kid, although you'd never know it, talking to her, but the phone and her are, you know, symbiotic way. If I could have got figured out a way to have phones banned from this place where she was going, she'd have learned a lot more. And I totally agree with Brandon that on the day that we throw that one down and we say, okay. We go put your phones in your lockers when you arrive and take them out when you leave. That we are going to have people hang the ceiling and telling us that, you know, what happens when the shooter comes in? How am I going to track down my kid? I mean, just the few comments we got the one night that we opened that question up. But I, 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 that is a battle. Unlike some of the things that we wind up, you know, having to hear a lot of screaming and hollering about. That's a battle where I feel like we can get a lot more education into our kids if we're brave enough to take and do something.
Exactly. And about the shooter, too, a good friend of mine, her daughter came home and was talking about the cell phone issue. And she said, our teacher says we shouldn't have cell phones if there's a shooter because they can hear that and they might track you down. Or if you're in a dark room and you see the cell phone, you're not supposed to have your cell phone with you. Because it's like a, you know, it'll alert the shooter to where you are. So there's, you know, both sides. It's.
Yeah, it's worth the discussion.
Yeah, I think so. I think that it might not take, okay, you've got to put them in your locker and you can't take them out to the end of the day. That doesn't seem realistic, but there's got to be kind of a more balanced approach than they're carrying them all day long through the hall in lunch. And they're not talking to each other, you know, that eventually you gotta, okay, you have to learn how to grow up and communicate with people and talk to them. You can't always be like.
Like some classrooms, do they have like that area that you kind of put it? Like a shoe, like a shoe, like a shoe.
Right. And it's left to the discretion of the teacher. The policy says phones need to be put away unless the teacher gives you permission to have it out for something learning based. So some teachers, it's keep it in your backpack. Other teachers, it's shut on the wall.
Right. So I think that there needs to be some consistency with this. However, I think about it or whatever.
Is this something that the board can propose as a topic for one of our, you know, community? Have have known conversations with community. Typically, it's the community bringing questions to us, but we have evenings at times when it's kind of slow.
I think that might be a hot topic.
So maybe a lot of the girls might turn out for it and teachers, too.
Absolutely. Before we.
I would recommend doing waiting until fall for that, only because in summer, there's not going to be as much engagement. We can't get a teacher voice.
Sounds good. Anything else?
I have maybe a question of our agenda item, but this mentioned school shooting. This last topic and obviously the unfortunate event that happened in Texas. My question is, have we ever done a crisis plan event like that in recent? As well as involving local, local police and sheriff to understand their true response.
The last time we did that was three years ago. And we had said we would do that about every third year. We, it's a modified version probably of what you're talking about because. We don't have, we don't have all the SWAT teams. We don't have everyone. When we had a bomb threat here six years ago, I think it had nine different forces coming, even we knew it was safe. But that was an awesome practice to see who came, how we managed it. We train every year, but the more of the staff, let's spend two hours going in depth and what would you do and what's, what's this like? That's every two to three years, three years. And we involved with three different workshop sheriff's deputies. So not just our SRO, but also others that came in and provided the instruction for the teachers. We started out in the theater with more of like a lesson and video and statistics. And then we went out into classrooms and practiced. Which is helpful for staff and then with students, of course, we do our annual drill.
Update the safety plan every year, every August, we update the safety plan. Then we, the board approved it last year. Is that part like a three year plan or is that a number year?
By statute, that's every three year.
Yeah.
So we reviewed that in full with the board this past.
Yeah, we want to do a closed session. But for any new board members, if you want to walk through that plan, too, we could set up a plan to just be walk through what our crisis plan looks like.
And that's always done in closed session and we don't hand, we hand out a copy and collect it back, just obviously for confidentiality and safety factors.
Some of the things now. True, may not be, but things being recorded out now about that incident, the side door being propped open. Police force or SWAT force going in, all of those that have raised questions coming back to me as to what would happen if it's here. And what were the police force doing? Do you have the ability to prop the door open? Those type of questions, really, just getting into that from my understanding. Not picking it apart, but just to get an understanding of what are the vulnerabilities of these potential other access points.
Did you guys get any feedback about what our plans are or questions about litigation?
After the last school shooting, I want Karen to ask, and it was a freshman here. I think they had just moved into the area, too, if I remember correctly, and just asked, what, what do we have in place? So I gave her a newsletter from, I remember it was this fall or last spring, where it listed everything out. And she was very impressed. She just had no idea of how much is actually done in school. Some of that is Arrowhead based. Some of that is actually in state statutes. And we have a crisis team, evaluation team. So if someone, threat assessment team. So it's not just physical plant things in place, but there's, there's more of the psychological evaluation that if a threat is made, what are the steps involved? When do we determine it's a valid threat? Do we determine that? Does police determine that?
Figure there'd be more actually expected of that community conversation tonight, to be honest, you know, are we doing enough? I think it's a sad sign of.
I do, too.
Right, I bet if we went back to Sandy Hook or, you know, the deal on. Do you guys get the sense that parents are okay with what we're doing? Like, at what point do we? Do you guys get the sense that parents are okay with what we're doing? Like, at what point do we need to start talking about metal detectors at the core?
We did talk about that probably five or six years ago and checked with some other school districts who had tried that, and they all abandoned it. Because what happened, the, the example that I think of most was Hartford, because Donna Smith, our tech director, was working there as a teacher at the time. And they put in metal detectors, and within a few months, they just took them back out. The reason was, one, it slowed down the entry. So two thousand students to get in, you were having kids have to arrive forty-five minutes early and wait in a line. There wasn't staff, so if you were going to have staff members, you're pulling them out of classroom preparation, or you're hiring people. And then what Donna said they ended up doing was this, the metal detectors were detecting band instruments or metal on a pen. So then they'd ratchet them down where they weren't detecting anything. You know, kids get into class and it just, so that's what we learned from asking other districts about metal detectors, that that really isn't, it isn't a foolproof way of doing, nothing is going to be cool. Sadly, but so you don't see many schools with metal detectors.
Go to Disney last year, walk through big things, and they're metal, they're big tech something, but you don't really know what they're looking for.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for once, been really participative.